All right, now call to order the March 12th, 2024 Regular Meeting Wellington Board of Trustees. Time being 6:31 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Daly?
Present.
Trustee Gator?
Here.
Trustee Mason?
Here.
Trustee Wiegand?
Here.
Trustee Teetz?
Here.
Mayor Proton McDonald?
Here.
Mayor Shosse?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Thank you.
Are there any amendments to the agenda this evening?
No.
Are there any conflicts of interest?
The meeting this evening? No.
Perfect. Okay, before we start, I just want to state that if there's comments from the crowd when you're not at the podium, you will be given a warning. If there is a second comment, we will be pulled aside, have a discussion. You may be removed at that time if it's deemed reasonable. So keep that in mind. Please be respectful of everybody in the room, and now we will open this up for public comments. If you would like to speak, please approach the podium, state your name for the record, and you'll be given three minutes to speak. Okay, no public comment. Oh, this is for non-agenda items as well. Okay, yeah, so that'll be when that item comes up, you can speak at that time. You're fine. Thank you, sir. All right, so next will be a presentation for Mr. Mark Gabbert, the Chairperson for the Community Services Center Board of Directors. Mr. Gabbert?
Good evening. Thank you all for the service you render to our community. I know it's difficult. It's appreciated, each and every one of you. Yes, my name is Mark Gabbert. I wear a few different hats around this community, have for a long time. I suppose my greatest energy and time is devoted as pastor at Zion Lutheran Church. And I'm also Chair of the Board for Grace Village, who is making this request this evening on behalf of the Community Services Center. Also been a coach in this community for a long time, including the mayor here was on one of my first football teams.
We were undefeated that year.
We were undefeated, that's right. I still have his name on the back of one of my shirts, so. I didn't know how long of a presentation to make. I don't really feel like it has to be that long because it's a fairly straightforward request. We are, the Grace Village Board is pursuing this dream, this project called the Community Services Center for Wellington. And the goal of this is to fill some gaps, some very significant, significant service gaps in this community. This center, the Community Service Center, will bring to Wellington the services of the Laramo County Human Services and all that they offer. There is also in this community, and it's well noted, especially felt by the schools, that Wellington is really a desert for mental health resources. So that will also be addressed in this building. Well, one thing that I didn't put in the letter that was presented to the trustees is that this will also provide, and very importantly, provide a new home for the Wellington Food Bank. The Wellington Food Bank has been in existence for over 30 years, started with just a couple of gals opening the front door of the church over there at Zion with some basic staples and made it available to anybody from the community that needed some help. Now it has grown into a very significant effort that twice a month we gather over at River of Life Community Church set up. Takes many volunteers, several hours to set up. We haul in tons of food, set it up, welcome people from the community. Last week we had 90 families come through. They come through, and then whatever's left, we repackage and haul back to be stored for the future. That really is a non-sustainable or unsustainable way of doing things. It's gonna wear us out if it hasn't already. But more importantly, it's also just not that effective that just a couple of hours, twice a month, we're open. If somebody's not available to come during that time slot, they can't get there, then they can't receive food. So we're looking to, in this building, put a permanent pantry that will be open multiple days a week for multiple hours, different times of day, so that the many food insecure families from our community can come and receive services. One of the things that aligns with the plan for the strategic plan for this community is that we all know that there's also a lack of meeting spaces in this town. And this facility will have two meeting spaces that will be available for groups in this community to gather and meet in those spaces. Other than that, we will host several other nonprofit organizations. Something that's near and dear to my own heart and in my own family is supporting foster care families and those who are seeking adoption. So we'll have a couple of nonprofits sharing office space in there as well. So that's kind of the quick overview of what this is all about. And we are requesting $10,000 from discretionary funds be granted to us as a gesture of support from the trustees and the leadership of this town for what we're trying to accomplish. Would love to answer any questions if there are any.
Perfect. Trustee Wiegand?
When are you looking at breaking ground on this?
Last summer.
Last?
Yeah.
When are you hoping to break ground on this?
Our adjusted goal now is looking at early 2025. It's all dependent. Everything's in order. All the plans have been made. We've already had several discussions with the town of Wellington about all of the issues involved with that. We have some plans coming for a neighborhood forum and then a community forum. So we give everybody in the community a chance to answer or ask their questions, express their concerns. So Don construction has been retained as our builder. They're very excited to be part of this. One of the key leaders lives just across the highway here in Wellington, so he'll be the construction manager for this. So it's already, other than the funding, and we're making a lot of progress there. We've retained the services of Donna Vasaki, who has a background doing a lot of fundraising and a lot of community projects. And with her leadership, we're gonna get there. It's just not happening as quickly as we'd hope.
When do you think that's gonna happen?
Oh, I'm sorry.
As far as getting up to the dollar amount so you can start doing this?
Before the end of this calendar year.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Teetz?
Yes, being someone that used to volunteer at the food bank, I think it's extremely beneficial that we have those services available here in town. I think the attendance was high even when I was volunteering. We didn't offer the to-go packages back then, but it's awesome to see that that's available, and you guys are doing that in our community now. My question, kind of, I've, trustee Wiegand had one of the same questions I did. My other question is, so I love, when it says here, it says 2.3 million is what you guys are estimating for build-out.
Yes.
How much have you raised so far?
We are around, we've passed the 700,000 mark. The bulk of it are grants through Laramo County. But we, what makes me most optimistic is we are now linked up with some other real movers and shakers in this community that are familiar with how to approach this kind of fundraising. It's pretty new to me. And we're gonna be forming an advisory board for our board that will help us with this endeavor. And they're confident that the resources are there. We just have to figure out the best time and way to ask.
Got it. Thank you. I just wanna kind of know where you guys are compared to where you're headed for a total amount that you're looking. My other question stems from, so I was able to have a few meetings with a gentleman that was looking for information and discretionary funds questions and items like that, I want to say about a year and a half ago. And one of the comments that was made to me, and I used to be the clothes closet here in town, so I know some of the-
We're gonna have a clothing pantry.
Yes, I saw that. Yep, I did it for seven years. Mine started as a college project in nursing. We had to find something for the Phi Theta Kappa, so National Honor Society, so engaged leadership. So what I'm curious on is, at that meeting, they had specifically stated that you guys were going to limit services and not allow sex offenders in for counseling and items like that into the building. Do you know if that's still a standing point that you guys are on?
We talked to Laramo County about what their needs would be for security in the facility. And they said they would intentionally not bring high-risk cases into the building. Yeah, I don't know that anything's been written.
Okay.
Policy-wise in terms of that, but we will do whatever it takes to make sure that everybody who comes into that facility and the surrounding area are going to be safe.
Got it. Well, and I honestly, whether or not they do come in, I would love it to see offenders getting counseling for issues. So that is nothing I am against. Just wanted to understand that these services that were gonna be available for anyone coming into the building.
Absolutely.
Got it. My other question is, is are you guys with pairing with Serve 6.8 regarding the clothes pantry?
There's tentative agreement that they will help us with that. They have a very large army of volunteers available to do all the sorting and, you know, putting things together. And they said they'd help us with that, but that's a conversation that happened a while back. Haven't followed up with yet. But I'd like that to happen because they do it well.
Got it. So will they be in partnership with you guys, or will they be only donating clothes?
I don't know how to define partnership. They-
Will they be?
Their sign won't be out anywhere in the building.
Okay.
They're just providing this service for us so we can provide it to the community.
Got it. So their rules and restrictions won't be in place in your community service?
No, they won't.
Got it. Cause I had also spoke with them about a partnership when I was doing the clothes closet. And I was greatly concerned that their requirement was, not that I'm against, because I love it when people commit to God, but there was, that was a requirement of theirs, that you had to attend so many counseling sessions. And when my idea of as a community service building is you're there to help anybody.
Absolutely.
Through partnership and walking.
Right. And we see eye to eye with them on almost everything, but not on that.
Perfect.
We will serve everyone. Somebody wants to know why we love and why we serve, we'll explain that to them. But our goal is not proselytizing.
Got it. Perfect. I just wanted to verify that through, through this. I don't have any more questions.
Thank you. Trustee Gator?
Yeah, so I'm very excited about what you guys are doing. And I know I've had a great talk with Donna on Sunday and had two conversations, but I appreciate some of these she asked, but I did want to kind of ask one so that way you can explain to the residents as well. So right now you guys are looking at kind of funding initial building, but what are your plans in terms of funding ongoing operations for this center?
It will be a combination of income from the offices that we will be renting. We said we have four offices already committed to. We did reduce our number of offices recently. We decided that let's not pretend that parking isn't a concern, right? And we thought, you know, to have the kind of busyness that we might have with the food pantry and Laramo County and counseling, that 10 offices might be a little bit too many. So we're gonna convert one of those or two of those offices into another gathering, a smaller group gathering space that people in the building can use and the community can use. So we will be charging rent and getting lease from those folks. Other than that, there will be the ongoing operations that we've had with food bank all along. It's gonna be fundraising and writing grants and getting that ongoing support. But we have on our board CPA serving as treasurer, and her and Donna have done a great job putting together a working budget. And we're confident that we can cover expenses through leases.
Excellent. And I appreciate what you guys are doing, and I kind of share this with Donna, because I know one of the things that I've worked with is trying to have the town focus. We have a lot of things that we do, roads, water, sewer, all those things. And so I'm very cautious about us taking taxpayer dollars and then funneling that out to nonprofits. But what I really like is that what you guys are coming to us is saying, this is something we've been hearing from people for a long time. We need services, we need services. And a lot of times, what's that? We as the government go and spend that money to do it. So I am so excited that you as a private entity are saying, hey, we want to step in and help fill this gap. Will you then come in and partner with us? And I especially like that you're asking, can you help us get it built? And so it's not something like, hey, we need this ongoing money every year after year after year from you guys. So I appreciate the way that you guys are doing that. You are going for something that I've heard from many people. We need these services, we need these services, and I'm excited to see you guys stepping up to fill that gap.
Right, and thank you. And in our letter, we do indicate that we can earmark this at the discretion of the group. If this would be something you would support, we could earmark this specifically for the ADA elevator that'll be part of it. Because the whole building needs to be accessible to everybody. So if that's the desire of this group, we'd certainly honor that.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thanks. Trustee Daly?
Bless you. First and foremost, thank you. There are definite holes in our community and services that are available, especially services that are not accessible for people who may have difficulties with transportation. With transportation. That's come up so many times. It's a number one deterrent for many of the forums I've been part of, specifically those associated with youth and mental health support. There is all of these efforts towards Pooter School District right now to support youth and mental health. And all of those are being initiated and followed through, and that's fantastic. None of those are in the town of Wellington. So all these wonderful initiatives happening in Laramo County, the same amazing initiatives happening to support our county. None of them are in Wellington. So the fact that you have seen this need, you have stepped up, is so amazing. And the other thing I really appreciate and I want to just highlight is that you're doing this is through strategic partnerships. So it's not just your organization working on this. It is Laramo County. It is Summit Stone. And you're working with all those big partners to make it happen. Because it's silly when we have these initiatives and we try to do it alone, when there's multiple, multiple entities trying to do the same thing or want to do the same thing, but not acting because of those limitations of funding, for example. But when you bring them all together, then the magic happens, and that's exactly what you guys are doing. So I wanted to say thank you, thank you, thank you. I am, would be, you know, based on the success of this project, one of the next-door neighbors of this. And I'm a full supporter, and I have been from the very beginning, so I'm very excited. The Laramo County contribution I mentioned was the Impact Grant. And so they really started the ball rolling because when we're talking about potentially participating in this project, it's not just for $10,000. It is, it is for us to put a stamp of approval with money behind it. So when they go and they seek more donors, they can say, we have the full support of the town of Wellington with Laramo County, Summit Stone. And they can add that list of all the participants that are really important to make this project successful. So our $10,000 then turns into $2 million. So it's such a minor contribution that will then start the ball rolling and be a catalyst for the fundraising that has to happen from this point on. So I just want to highlight that, that we're not just talking about $10,000 here. We're talking about empowering them to do the work that they need to do. I think we could do a lot more than that, not necessarily from a financial contribution point, but from a position of support. So that's something I think that we should maybe consider from the board perspective as well, moving forward to see how more we can provide our support or backing or just, just, you know, letters or letters or whatever they can be, but what more we can do to speak on or support on the behalf of the town of Wellington. So that's something I post to our board for the future, of course. But I just wanted to say thank you so much for seeing those holes and meeting them. And it's exactly people like you and those involved in this project make Wellington a better place to live and make it the community that we're so proud to have. So thank you very much.
Thank you for those words. And what you said there is very important. I'm glad you brought that up. That it's not, it's not just the 10,000, you know, it's just, for example, I just got a letter signed by the principal and two assistant principals at the school.
Great.
Saying, yes, this mental health need is critical. All these needs are critical. And I had to tell them that that is exceedingly valuable.
Yes.
Maybe more valuable than making a contribution. Because those letters combined, that level of support altogether is what will get the attention of the kind of donors that we need to pull this off. So glad you brought that up.
Great.
And the mental health thing, really a lot of that came through my relationship with the schools. And that's where I became aware of, I mean, I've been in youth ministry myself for 40 something years now. So I've been aware of the need, but just how critical it is and just how big a deal the transportation issue is in that, in that way. To make that accessible right here in this town is very important. So thank you.
Yes, I spoke with Donna. We brainstormed a lot of ideas. One of the things I've already, there's several things I committed to and deliverables I owe you. But one of them is I did plant the seed within the Health District Board members. I talked to them in detail and asked for them for support, and they are looking for additional information and how to participate. So, but there is a long list of other items that I promised to do, and I promise, it's on my list. I guarantee you it will happen. I got a little thrown off, off track, but I remember I have it.
Definitely takes a team effort here.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Mason?
Pastor Gabbert, really appreciate you being here. I know many of us on this board would love to support your mission here. Certainly mental health services, adoption services, and continuing to support the Wellington Food Bank and some of our community members that are in need for those types of services. I think that's really stepping up to the plate, and I really appreciate what you're doing with that. You did mention one of the big items that I was gonna ask about specifically earmarking the $10,000 for a specific project. I know in both your letter and here at the podium, you had mentioned installation of an elevator as far as accessibility goes. Just being good stewards of taxpayer dollars, I would like to ensure that that money is earmarked for something very specific. And I guess my only concern would be that if in the event that the building didn't begin construction or something this year, that that money would still be available when it was to come to fruition. So I think that's, that's my only concern as far as that goes, but otherwise I would very much love to support this.
Yeah, I guess that raised a question. I didn't, are there timeline considerations for the expenditure? I mean, with some of the grants we have, we've received or support, there have been timelines that this has to happen by this point.
Yeah, the limitation's only based off of the board decision, just given that every year a budget's adopted. So if that were included in a subsequent year, that would be a consideration of the next board, perhaps, for example. So that, I think that's the main consideration for what year? Is that what was your intent or concern?
Yeah, and I think maybe, maybe it's a bigger question for the board overall is, do, would, I don't necessarily want to put a time limit on it. I guess what I would say is certainly we want that money to be available when it, when it's needed to be used, and not that it would, you know, somehow be used for something else or something like that. So I don't, I suppose it's up to the board really what they want to do.
Can I make a suggestion on that, on that point? A grant like this, I think usually would have a grant application, and we want to enter sign to some kind of agreement with, at the Community Services Center. So I think today, what would be fantastic, and what I think I'm hearing from the board, and I know trustee McDonald's up there on Zoom, and I imagine she wants to say something as well, so I'll try not to speak for her. It sounds like there's a lot of support, so I think today if the board expresses a support for this project, that then would allow staff to work with Community Services Center. We'll get something in writing. And I'm hearing earmarking something for like a solid deliverable, and I absolutely want that as part of what the town requires legally in order to support a nonprofit. So I think today it's more of a general support, and then that allows us to work with them. We'll come back with something in writing with a lot of that figured out. So you don't need to worry about those details today. We can come back with those later.
If I can, I would actually like to agree on what we're earmarking, just so we don't waste any additional legal time debating or having those conversations. I love the idea of it earmarked for the ADA, ADA accessibility for the elevator. I actually really truly like trustee Mason having something specific. And I can honestly say that it's probably one of the only reasons why I would get behind this, considering it is a nonprofit, which means if one nonprofit is funded, we're gonna have every single nonprofit coming and asking for $10,000. So that is definitely something that I am comfortable stating. If this is for ADA accessibility, it is a great need, and it is very expensive. So I like having that idea of having it earmarked.
Perfect. Thank you. Mayor Proton?
Thank you so much. Mark, great presentation. I think that this project has the opportunity to provide a high rate of return for improving the quality of life for our citizens, especially for a community that's trying to grow well. I applaud you for your efforts for all of the opportunities that you're providing in this project for people to participate. I just have one question for you. Who could people contact in the event that they want to provide in-kind services? Like, let's say you get close to the end of the project and somebody wants to donate interior paint or office fixtures. Who's that contact person?
That'll be managed through Don. Through Don Construction. Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I think it's wonderful that the board is willing to support this project.
Thank you. Coach Gabbert?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for the presentation. Yeah, this has been a dream of yours for years and years and years. So I'm glad to see it coming to fruition and glad to hear that the board does support this cause. And I mean, it's gonna do amazing things for the community. So thank you, and I am in support as well. You don't need to doubt that. I think at this point, we all, yes, trustee Gator?
I had two things. One, just from a timeframe, my recommendation would be that this needs, whatever is agreement needs to be brought back prior to the election, because again, we aren't technically allowed to obligate future boards to financial consideration. It gets dicey. I just, I don't expect anything to change, but I think it would be best if we just get that all sorted out before the election. So it's the same board that's here now is approving what we've talked about, rather than bringing in a new board with potentially new people who are like, well, I haven't seen any, again, I don't anticipate it being an issue, but I just think it would be better. So just from a timeframe standpoint, I want to throw that out there. My recommendation would be, let's make sure that we push this through prior to the election. The second thing, I just wanted to confirm, we have 30,000 that is in the Board discretionary fund. How much of that has been designated to, is planned out to support the senior senator shortage?
$10,000.
10,000. Okay, perfect. I thought it was 10. I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't off on the number. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Elevator, thumbs up for elevator? Perfect. You guys have your guidance. Thank you very much. Okay, now I will close the regular meeting and open the Liquor License Authority Board, time being 7:00 PM. Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Daly?
Present.
Trustee Mason?
Here.
Trustee Gator?
Here.
Trustee Wiegand?
Here.
Trustee Teetz?
Here.
Mayor Proton McDonald?
Here.
Mayor Shosse?
Here.
Thank you. And Mayor Proton McDonald, just to clarify, since you're attending virtually, you will not be participating in quasi-judicial actions, correct?
Correct.
Okay, fantastic.
Any conflicts of interest? No. Any ex parte communications, board notes to disclose? No. Perfect. Mr. Clerk, will you please read title items, C1?
C1, Green Events Special Event Liquor Permit Amendment.
Are you gonna present from there?
I'm just gonna go ahead and present from here today.
Okay.
Perfect. Yeah, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Shosse, members of the board, Ethan Moose, your town clerk. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. I'm here to present the item for Green Events, Inc. They've applied for a special event, excuse me, an amendment to their special event application permit. The original permit was approved on, at the February 13th, 2024 meeting. The original diagram you can find in your packet, it's attachment three to this item. The applicant requests an amendment to their license that would permit the event to occur in the parking lot that's close to the original premise in the case of-
the original premise. In the case of inclement inclement weather, the applicant has permission from the property owner as they've provided and demonstrated in the packet and plans to conduct a weather call ahead of the event in accordance with the Wellington municipal code. Notice has been posted conspicuously on the premise for ten days prior to the hearing. Staff would recommend that you hold a public hearing on this item to determine any questions you may have for the applicant to assess the use of or the permission of the landowner to to use the premise and then to grant the applicant permission to use the alternate premise as a contingency in the case of weather events. I'm happy to take any administrative related questions that you may have on this item.
Any questions from the board? Trustee Gator?
So the only thing that's changing is the alternate location, and is that the alternate location is the parking that's highlighted across the street? That would be the alternate location?
Correct.
Okay, and nothing else has changed? Just simply we get there if the weather's bad?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That was my only question.
Not the parking across the street.
Trustee Teet, in their parking lot.
It's in the packet on page eighteen is a is is a highlighted area. It's in the same, it's in the parking lot of the building where Sparge is located.
Oh, thank you. Sorry, I was looking at page twenty.
Right, hundred twenty, that shows where the parking is.
Parking for the event. Got it. Okay, it'll be the area behind. Thank you. I was looking at the wrong picture.
Absolutely.
That was the one point that I was gonna make note of. The other one was as long as we have permission from all of the businesses to take up their back access, did we secure the permissions to take up all their back access?
So the entity known as H and M Enterprises owns that lot. I've asked the applicant to provide evidence that the the entity has provided that permission. The evidence they've given me is in the packet. If you have additional questions about that, I would recommend asking the applicant.
Okay, nope, just verifying that all of that's been authorized. Perfect.
Do you guys have any questions for the applicant?
No. Nope, I'm grateful that they preemptive planned for this because we are known to have very wet times of that year, so I'm happy that it was preemptively planned.
I will now open the public hearing on this item, time being seven oh three, seven oh four P M. Are there any comments from the public on this item? No. I will now close the public hearing on this item, time being seven oh four P M. Any closing comments from staff?
I don't have anything for you this evening, Mr. Shosse.
Anything further from the board? No. All right, do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the proposed amendment for contingency premises to the special event liquor permit application.
I second it.
Perfect. Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand.
Yes.
Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Trustee Mason.
Yes.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously, and the amendment is approved.
Thank you. I now close Liquor Licensing Authority Board meeting, time being seven oh four P M, seven oh five P M. And I will open up the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees, time being seven oh five P M. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, will you please read title on the consent agenda?
D one, February twenty seven, twenty twenty four, regular meeting minutes.
Do I hear a motion on the consent agenda?
I would like to just request one change on that. So on page twenty three under presentation, we have Limerick County Sheriff's Office annual report. Since we do have deputies, then we also have Sergeant Cherry, who actually kind of serves. Can we just update that to say Sergeant Cherry instead of deputy? I know you technically are deputy, but you're also our sergeant, so I just want to clarify that if that's okay with the board. I meant to email it, and I
I have no problem.
The mountains ate my email, so that's it. That's my only recommendation.
Perfect.
So I will move to approve the consent agenda with the hold on, I'm looking at the wrong, thank you, with the February twenty seven, twenty twenty four, regular minute meetings, meeting minutes with the adjustment to add Sergeant Cherry instead of deputy.
Second.
Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand.
Yes.
Trustee Mason.
Yes.
Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Mayor Proten McDonald.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously, and the consent agenda is approved with the stated amendment.
Thank you. All right, on to action items. Mr. Clerk, will you please read the title for item E one?
Continued Resolution Number ten dash twenty twenty four, formerly zero seven dash twenty twenty four, approving an intergovernmental agreement between the Town of Wellington, the Town of Berthud, and the Town of Timneth concerning a joint agreement for animal control services with no co humane.
Thank you. And Ms. Garcia, the town manager, will present.
Thank you very much. So tonight you have two items related to the agreements with no co humane for animal control. The first is the intergovernmental agreement between the towns of Wellington, Timneth, and Berthud. The second is the joint agreement for animal control services. Both agreements were initially presented at the January twenty third Board of Trustees meeting and were postponed to jet to February thirteenth and then to today. The topic of animal control has been discussed at several meetings and most recently at a work session on February twentieth. The board discussed a variety of areas related to animal control, including a review of the town's code and creating opportunities for towns to have, for our parks to potentially have off leash opportunities for dogs and things like that. The town's former contract for animal control expired on January thirty first, and we currently have a temporary agreement with no co humane, which will expire on March thirty one, twenty twenty four. The I G A provides for a three way split for the cost of services between Wellington, Berthud, Berthud and Timneth, and the Board of Trustees approved a twenty twenty four budget that includes nineteen thousand six hundred ninety four dollars for the for the full service contract for Wellington. This has been discussed a lot in a variety of ways. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Judy Calhoun is also here, who really doesn't have much to do with the I G A, but she will be available to talk at the next item.
Thank you. Any questions from the board on this item? Start with Trustee Wiegand.
None at the moment.
Perfect. Trustee Teets.
Are we looking at this as a group of them, or are we looking at one and then the other?
So we're looking at one and then the other.
Okay, perfect. Then, no, I don't have anything right now.
Trustee Gator.
I think that a lot of my concerns come in around with the I G A, because again, the I G A brings us into a contract. There's an ongoing contract with Berthud and Timneth that kind of does the full service. I know that we did a survey. We got a lot of public feedback, and so there's something needs to be done differently. My concerns continue to be around what is it that we're doing? And I don't believe that the full service contract is the right answer for that. So because of that reason, it makes no sense for me to support an I G A to enter into a full service contract that I don't think is the right thing. So that's, I I don't my questions haven't answers have been provided information, and I just look at the calls and what we need as Wellington. I don't think the I G A pushes towards the solution that we need to pursue. So that's, I don't have further questions.
Okay.
But that's my concerns.
Thank you. Any questions, Trustee Daly?
Two L indicates that we will establish a procedure for how to bring complaints and other general procedure questions. So I was just curious for timelines or if that's coordinated within the I G A whatsoever or anything like that, if that would be specific to Wellington and how we plan to maybe coordinate those procedures.
So that that will be addressed in the joint in the joint agreement, which will be the next agenda item, and Ms. Calhoun can speak to that directly.
Okay, great. Otherwise, I don't have any questions regarding I G A. I think it is wonderful that other communities do want to share in in costs. So from that perspective, I know there's other items to talk about regarding the contract, so I'll I'll hold this.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Mason.
Considering the discussion that we've already had on this topic up to this point, I don't have any questions at this time. I may have some comments later, but.
Thank you. Mayor Proten. Thank you. All right, are there any comments from the public on this item?
Christine, if it please the mayor, I'd like to donate my time to Dr. Zadina. Thank you.
I'm Dr. Zadina, owner of Taburo Animal Hospital and a concerned citizen. So first, just trying to organize my thoughts, so I'll try to talk fast, but not too fast. First of all, I think we can do better. I feel this post contract with the shelter is rushed and strong armed by no co humane in our time of need and basically was pushed through without us noticing or thought they would notice. The way it was found out was Dr. White Dallas was out playing ball with his dog and doing a dastardly deed of letting his dog run off leash, and an animal control officer came and sort of harassed him and told him this is not what we do in Wellington, and he looked to see how much money we're getting paid and discovered this. So anyway, I feel it's only the pressure of the of this to the shelter is the easier route. And those charged manager of town tend to lack creativity in the subject and haven't really asked for input other than the survey that was kind of designed to say what they wanted to hear. It didn't actually include the things like, do you want to have more hassle when your pet runs off? Do you want to pay more money when your pet runs off, things like that? So we haven't addressed that, and I think we can do better. You know, with that, we did have a good organized meeting time with Trustee Gator and Trustee Daly and Ed White Dallas, then a couple of representatives of the animal community. But we had good solutions, and then we talked to like Patty Garcia and to Judy Calhoun, the director, and nobody really wanted to sit down and talk, so we thought we could do better, which we didn't. You know, just want to start by sharing a quote from Saint Francis of Assisi, the patron saint of pets, in case you guys weren't aware. His quote was, not to hurt our humble brethren is their first duty to them, but it's not enough with a higher mission to be of service to them whenever they require it. So I believe the town means well in their attempt to serve our animal population, but like I said, we could do better. One, we have a responsibility to do no harm, and also a fiscal responsibility to spend our money effectively. And twenty thousand bucks, I know where it could go for the community center that we were potentially giving to them, so that'd be an easy place to go. I'm a lifelong animal owner, and for the past fifteen years a veterinarian, so I've been in the animal business for a long time. I kind of know them a little bit. I've always struggled with the concept of animal shelters being the designated person or persons to decide what we do with our animals and how we treat them. We as vets, I think, should be more involved because we are the ultimate experts in how animals are treated and treated and also taken care of. I want to say that I'm not opposed to animal shelters, as they might see, because I was told that it that I don't like them, but I do like them. It's just we need to have them in proper positions, and we need to be in control because it's our money. Let's circle back to not hurting animals. Just in the name of no co humane, we're kind of tricked into believing that they're they're very humane and with everything, but it just being a no kill shelter to me isn't humane and doesn't treat them with, or not a no kill, but a kill shelter doesn't treat them with the humanity and respect we should give them. Just sharing a little story about that. We had a clinic cat named Gino. Gino belonged to an elderly woman in a nursing home. He was a very sweet Siamese cat, started peeing in her building, and she wasn't able to treat him, so she kind of got tired of having to clean up urine and asked me what to do. And I said, we'll take him to the Humane Society, but tell them, because she was very distraught about this idea, she said, tell them that if I if you don't think they're going to put him down, to call me and I'll take him. And so luckily, we said that because he was dropped off at noon. At two o'clock, we got a call saying, if you don't take him by five, we're going to put him down. Well, Gino was a great cat, lived his life in our clinic until he passed away of cancer, probably six years later, and a good story. But I wonder how many animals don't get that option and just get put down. You know, it's the unfortunate side effect. Other thing is, one needs to be considered after what happens when a pet is taken to to the shelter and potential risk for them. So once again, in my own experience, I live north of town, eight miles, and on a night like, it's probably going to happen tonight, a dog was, my dogs were out roaming and dared to chase some rabbits and ran into a snowstorm, and I spent the whole evening chasing them. About midnight, I gave up and figured they're probably dead. And the next day at noon, got a call from the shelter, and they said, we've got your dogs here. I said, why didn't you call me because they're microchipped that night? Well, we don't do that in the fields. It's not our job. Once picked them up, one, it was a scary scene for the dogs. They were vaccinated without my consent. And I got a bill for, can't remember correctly, but probably at least a hundred, a hundred fifty dollars per dog, and then a summons to go to court. So it's just a very expensive trip for chasing rabbits. It seems like in town, we handle it pretty well by returning them to their owners. We, you know, they go to the vet clinic, we call them and say, we got your dog, and it's an easy peasy, you know, way to go home, and the dogs aren't scared, and it doesn't cost people money. You know, and also the other thing to add is, you know, currently, I asked with the contractor, they they keep quoting about twenty four hour care is one of the advantages. Not sure if that's really possible because I talked to Trustee Teets and just about experiences, once again, emergencies that are on the weekends, especially in after hours are referred to C S U. I can do that as a vet. I have twenty four hour call, so it's pretty easy, you know, to do that. Then also, like, I've been called out several times, and I'm proud to be called out by the fire department, and the last one was the building that exploded. We took the dogs in and took care of them. And my question would be, is the shelter going to be called down and then take him? And then there's more travel time and rigmarole and such involved, so you know, we have to designate those things out, I guess, if we do approve it. The big big concern I have too is as a taxpayer, the lack of oversight, because from their records, we get, they get a third of their funding from our tax money, so that's a large budget. And so we have no oversight. So I've been asked, I've asked them if we could attend the board meetings. We have concerns, and I was very abruptly told no. And also, maybe wanted to see if we could have a designation from the town to be on the board, just to observe and voice concerns. I was told no. And so I think we need to look into that before we approve the contract as well, because we need to have oversight, and we need to be the ones to tell them what they do. And also be sure they spend our money appropriately. Otherwise, you know, the main thing is, like I said, the tax money, and I think we we as a community could do better. And I don't have a little more time, anybody? Thank you. Three more minutes. I'm I'm almost done, I promise. Or she can just read it for me. You know, anyway, I spoke with Dr. Van Meter at Wellington Vet, and she even said there's concerns. You know, she agreed. She said, I'd be willing to help you with this. And we can come up with a better plan. I mean, it wouldn't cost you guys anything, except, you know, there's no really financial incentive for us. It's more so we help the animals and give them a shot. And I would I would request that we use a shelter on demand when we need them. The other issue that arises sometimes is the fact that they want to have animal control officers on the streets, you know, writing tickets, you know, as a corporation, they're financially, there's a financial incentive to write tickets for things, and I'm not talking about, you know, code violations, more so taking the dogs in because they get the impound money from that. So why wouldn't they impound a lot of animals and make the same experience happen to me happen to everybody else? That's not just cover everything. But once again, we can do better, and I'm willing to help, and there's other people in the community that can. We just weren't asked is a big thing. This is sort of just forced upon us, and here we are. So appreciate your time.
Thank you.
So I like growing up in a small town that takes care of each other and each other's pets, and I just don't want to see people's pets sheltered when they can just go back to their home. So please, for the sake of our town and kindness for each other, don't have mean animal control roam the town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Dawn Peacock. With respect to animal control, we know that the town needs to protect the residents right now. That creating an entity that can service the town locally for future local animal control services and then contract with the town will take a good year to create. This isn't something that can be thrown together. It needs to be done correctly. My concern is that the town does does have the responsibility to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money, and since there is no transparency with that group, we would ask that for the time that we have an agreement with NOCO, someone from the I G A should either be given a non voting, non compensated seat on the board or be invited to attend each board meetings as a guest during the time of our, during the duration of our contract. I know that my tax dollars go to things that I do not support, and everyone else is the same thing. But as someone who has fostered unwanted pets that were headed to a kill shelter, having my dollars supporting a kill shelter is a hard pill to swallow. Not knowing the intentions and SOPs of the shelter because of lack of transparency gives me no comfort. If there were at least a representative for both our residents and our pets present at board meetings, it would introduce accountability, which I do not feel is being shown right now. I don't think that it's a lot to ask, and we do have two weeks before the contract expires to accomplish this. So I would ask the board to consider that.
Thank you.
Hi, Karen Eifert. I live in the Knowles. I'm coming to speak because I'm really concerned as well about doing this I G A and that means all the communities coming together to use that same thing, I think is what it means. But my biggest concern is not only for the animals, but for the people, and you know, my favorite thing to talk about is people with disabilities here. Service animals get away. Service animals are highly trained in canines and horses and multiples of other things, but I'll tell you right now, there's service dogs who are going to get away. Normally in an emergency, which I'm sure that Mr. Zadina knows about, if you see a service dog without their handler and they're wearing a service dog vest, that means that that handler that handles that dog, that has that service dog for a reason, is down. That means they're unable to respond. That means they need medical help. That means they need EMS immediately. They're going to maybe die. So one of the hugest concerns I have is that what if one of these service animals gets out? Mine did. Mine got out. He thankfully had enough training. He listened to the commands to come. He thankfully had enough training, he listened to the commands to come back and was rewarded to come back. But I've also seen it where I've had people who are using their service animal and they fall down, that dog books it to go get someone, that's what they're trained to do. And then somebody tries to snatch up that dog in the meantime. And I'm going to tell you now, it's over ten thousand dollars into an investment for a service dog. And so people can barely afford to get a service dog, insure that service dog and pay all of the um, medical costs associated with that service dog as well. And then to just have somebody from the, this IGA program go out and pick them up and like Mr. Zidina had said, said, well, we need to make sure he was in, um, that he was vaccinated, so we did that for you. And we need to make sure of this and we need to make sure of that, oh, and it's going to cost this to get him back. That's a huge concern because that's literally our town saying we won't care about our service animals, and it's not even just service animals in general. Because there's many service animals that are there for the elderly and those who have intellectual and developmental disabilities. They're not full-blown service dogs. We have therapy dogs in this town and we have company dogs in this town. By company, I mean that little dog that can go sit on grandma's lap and that's what she wants. And then goes out and goes potty and then comes back and doesn't mind laying around some more. Those aren't usually the large dogs, so the little dogs that can fed out that door the first time she opens door to go check her mail, to go offer groceries, all those types of things. And currently, it's all over Let's Talk Wellington. Your dog gets out, you post it on there. Um, I've seen trustee Kenny, I've seen trustee Teets, um, both of them trying to help find homes for pets that are located in Wellington. And I just really think that that's something that I've never seen in other towns, and I've lived in other small towns before, like Casper, Wyoming, twenty years ago, when it was small, and I just the people being able to reach out to each other, I don't know if you know what it does for their mental state to find that dog and to help them find back home. But also for that homeowner, that dog owner to know somebody cared enough to bring their dog home. Because that can mean the world to somebody, especially if they live alone, especially in a time if we have another pandemic. And anything else that's going on, that is their lifeline to any communication at all, if they don't have any more family that are living, or if they were just single growing up here and they never married. We need to make sure they're looking out for Wellington residents and not just another big entity coming here and saying, you do this. We have enough of that from you guys. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is John Harger. And I'd first like to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to come up here and uh, and give you my two cents. Uh, so I've been in, uh, moved here to Wellington in two thousand and six, so I've been here about seventeen years or so. And uh, moved my wife and family here from San Diego. And we brought a dog with us, we had uh, who's uh, was an old dog when we moved here and since we've had to put him down and we had a nice backyard. And uh, so he was just there most of the time. So I live over in Wellington Point over there on Mama's Circle. And uh, there's a I, I don't know everybody on my street, but I know like, you know, six houses down this way and that way, you know, so I know my neighbors. And they're out there walking and they're walking their dogs, we got lots of dogs and all that. And so uh, the first thing I'd like to say is in seventeen years there, I've only seen uh, just a small, like I think three times where I've seen a stray dog. And you know, so everybody's really responsible and I, I'd like to also qualify this too, that you know, I can, I can only speak to my little community. What's happening in the rest of Wellington, I'm sure you guys know far more, all the complaints or issues with prob, probably primarily dogs, I would assume. But uh, what I have now, now I have a cat, since our dog has passed away. And uh, he's a little, he's a yellow tabby and he's nine years old now, we got him as a kitten. And uh, his name is Charlie. And he's, he's like a, he's like a Garfield, you know, and he does like pizza, by the way. And uh, he's a very friendly cat and uh, my main point that I wanted to share with you guys here is that you know, we have a wonderful little community of, of old folks like me, uh, middle-class teenagers and, and young people. But the other component we have is our pets. And they make community so beautiful for us all. And uh, I've met about half of the neighbors that I've met, I've met through Charlie. Because you know, I, in the daytime I let him out and he goes around and he's calling and he has my, his name, my address and all that stuff. And, and uh, some people, he just followed him home and they call me, is this your cat? He's over there. Well, where are you? They told me, oh, just, just stop petting him, he'll come home. And so my concern is that, that I'd have uh, uh, you know, change this beautiful dynamic that we have going in our little community to where I can't let Charlie out anymore, you know, and, and my time's up, so. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate.
All right, start with trustee Gator for any further questions, comments on this item. So sorry, I want to cough in the microphone here. Um, I think that my concern is really kind of a, tried to break it down into really four areas that I have that, um, and this, a lot of this hasn't changed. Um, the first is around enforcement, again, this kind of goes to the next item, but again, the two are related because if we're approving the IGA, the IGA is for the contract, so can't really separate the two. Um, that's also with the cost increases, I mean, we're looking at a doubling of our cost increases, I know our total number of calls this last year was a hundred and roughly a hundred and forty-one. And really looking at what do we need here and what we have done in the past, and then what we need is really having that service here, service there. And I think one of the things that NOCO humane brought up, which is right, is that the bigger issue and concerns about enforcement have to do with what is in our code, right? And so that's an issue for us to address, is what are the ordinances, what do we need to change? But what my concern is, when we know that there's a concern here, there's an issue, especially a concern for our residents, for us to then say, okay, we're going to implement this contract and put enforcement out on the streets for code that we already know is an issue that we have not fixed yet. And so their job as enforcement is they're going to go out and they're going to enforce the code that we've already said as a board, we think there may be some concerns, we need to find a better solution maybe than what we have now. And then also just, I mean, there've been a lot of concerns raised about the members of the community, they'd prefer to see us working together as a community. Um, we just had a great conversation about how excited we are about bringing mental health services and a, uh, organization that's doing this and then potentially now having people have to drive south of Loveland, I think, to, to deal with pet-related issues and things like that, so um, I agree that there's a better way to go through that, so that's really kind of those four areas of my concerns that, uh, at this point, I'm not supportive of the IGA.
Thank you. Trustee Daley.
Depending how the contract goes, um, and if we're paying for it, I think we need to make sure we're splitting costs, so if we are considering the two items separately, um, and you know, it is dependent on the contract, but uh, if we were getting these services, we should share the costs among multiple communities, I mean, that's the financial responsible choice. So regarding the IGA and sharing costs, uh, I see the benefit there, for sure.
Thank you. Trustee Mason.
Um, well, a couple of comments here, and I suppose um, in uh, regards to trustee Daley's comments, I think there is a little bit of cost sharing in there as far as uh, between us, Berthoud, Timneth and Wellington. Uh, Berthoud's paying uh, fifty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-six, Timneth is paying twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-three, and we're paying nineteen thousand, six ninety-four. I guess one of the big, I, I'm going to make a couple of points that I had made certainly during the uh, last work session we had, which is, you know, certainly uh, while I sympathize with a number of the comments, commenters that have come here tonight, certainly uh, Mr. Zidina, as far as that goes, uh, I, I know you and I had had a number of comments or a number of discussions uh, face to face where I had kind of very explicitly said that, you know, this board, if we don't know what services, when those services are going to be provided, how they're going to be provided and what they're going to cost to the town, right? So if we wanted to enter into an agreement with Tabby Road or the Wellington Vet Clinic or something like that, this board has no information as far as what a contract with such an entity would look like, and I know uh, Mr. Zidina specifically, we've had a discussion about that many times. And that has been yet to been brought to the board. So while I would certainly love to consider a contract for twenty twenty-five with one of our local clinics, I don't have anything in front of me right now that uh, gives me the ability to consider such a thing. We have two weeks left on this deal, we've been considering this since January. I think we've all, we all know that. So at this point in time, I, my hands are almost kind of tied, with, the fact is, this, our community has to have some type of services in place, has to. So we can't go and let this expire and we're down to the last minute, so quite frankly, I have to be in support of the IGA and the contract at this point because I have no other options.
Thank you. Trustee Teets.
Okay, so this is something that I think I mentioned last time, I'd been in conversation with Ms. Garcia, I want to say April twenty twenty-two? Um, twenty-three, uh, it was noted that the contract was getting ready to expire when I was looking through a lot of items after I was elected. Um, and some of the things that weren't being followed through as far as what was guaranteed for animal control from a resident that had reached out asking why we did not have available services to call out and pick up a dog that they had found. And so that kind of triggered the ongoing conversation and that's when Ms. Garcia informed me that that contract would be getting updated and we would see a different kind of agreement coming to us that involved a um, agreement for partnership with different municipalities. I am in agreement with sharing costs, this part of the IGA. I'm fine supporting, um, my main issues and items I will speak about in this next section, it's hard when they're separated because they are all together. One thing that I do want to note is I have had a chance to talk with Dr. Zidina multiple times over the previous few weeks. And he is really passionate about this, so I give you kudos. And I know animals are your thing, as you have treated my animals multiple times. But I'm okay looking at the IGA because we cannot discuss the issues with the contract that's the next item without going through with the IGA, because if you don't support the IGA, there's not going to be a NOCO humane contract. Um, I still feel there is a lot of items that need to be addressed in that contract, but I will speak to those at the next step.
Thank you. Trustee Wigan.
Well, first off, I want to thank Tabby Rhodes, they take care of my puppy dog and do a great job, so love you guys over there. But uh, I do agree with trustee Mason over there, we do have to have something in place, I mean, we're in between a rock and a hard place, I think, at the moment. I live over on the east side of the interstate here and we do have some nasty dogs around there, we've had some attacks. And uh, you know, we just can only uh, have so much stuff going towards the police department, I mean, we got to keep them freed up for what they're out there to do. I would love to see the people-to-be bring a contract or something in for, or what you can do for twenty twenty-five. I think you can probably put together something really good, but we need to have something in place. Uh, we do have the option to cancel the contract with uh, the Humane Society, we just got to give them a ninety-day notice. So we do have that option, we're not stuck into a four, five-year degree or contract on that, so we need to keep that in mind. We do have a way of filing complaints, so if NOCO does something really stupid, not that they would, but I mean, if it, something happens where it does not go with what the uh, citizens would like, file complaint, bring it to us, you know, we need to be very aware of that, you know, if there's any abuse. And again, we need to look at the codes. There's a lot of things that we can change, I think we can work with the uh, different vets around to figure out exactly how we need to do that. Uh, we heard about the fetch park, I think the fetch park is a great idea and uh, yeah, there's a lot of things that we can do there. Uh, as far as working with uh, the NOCO on this too, is, you know, we need to demand that they make every effort to contact people if animals do get out, if they're chipped, whatever, they should have access to be able to do it, you know. They just can't throw that off saying, we don't do that in the field, because they've already said that they do do that. So we need to make them, you know, hold their feet to the fire and all that type of stuff. And uh, and again, I think the last thing is we don't need to push more on our law enforcement. They got more important things to do out there. Things can happen, things can go south in a heartbeat in this environment right now, and we need to make sure that they're out there available and that uh, they do what they need to do. And we don't want to take them away from that particular part. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I heard from the community that there is an overall concern for a lack of local control. And I think that what the fear is, is that by signing this IGA, the opportunities for people to uh, rescue their pets or have them return back home through opportunities that Doctors Zidina provides or the Wellington Vet Hospital. And even Let's Talk Wellington, um, my dog personally has been rescued on Let's Talk Wellington once. Um, and Doctors Zidina provide services to our pets. So this is um, you know, I think that there's a really great opportunity for public and private partnerships here for a future um, contract to define what those guidelines look like so that the people that are containing those animals and delivering them back home are covered and safe as well. Because I think that that's what is most important, is we're trying to make sure that the community is safe, our um, law enforcement is safe and the officials that are collecting these animals and getting them back to their owners are covered and safe, so. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on this item and I appreciate the, hearing the comments, position on this statement.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, in hearing Doctors Zidina, um, residents of the community, uh, loud and clear that you guys would like to keep this local, um, we're not in a position to do that this year. Um, by any means, we've reached out to Chad, asked him for contracts, um, dollar amounts that I'd be willing to entertain conversations if we had solid facts at hand, um, didn't get a reply. Doesn't mean that that's not something we can look forward to budgeting for next year or planning ahead of time to do that. So something to look forward to there, uh, Dr. Zidina. Yeah, I mean, uh, NOCO humane said that they would do a soft rollout. They would work closely with the town on what they enforce, what they don't enforce, they gave us the ideas of the fetch parks, much like you said. Um, that would give you an area where you could, you know, potentially play fetch with your dog at a park, have him off leash and it's a zone where they can do so. You know, we're really focusing on um, building this community and, and trying to get economic development going. And I think a large part of that is making sure that we're investing in our community properly, and I think animal control is a great step forward for that to show businesses that may want to come to town, things of that nature, that we take this seriously, we take our community seriously, we want to keep it safe. So that's why, I mean, I'm in favor of the IGA where it stands. Uh, I think it's a great idea to talk with Dr. Zidina, um, about maybe what something in the future may look like. But I would, once again, would need contracts, dollar amounts, things of that nature laid out for all those services for the uh, conversation to be had there. So that is my thoughts. Do I hear a motion on this item?
I will make a motion to approve resolution number ten dash twenty twenty-four, approving an intergovernmental agreement between the Town of Wellington, the Town of Berthoud and the Town of Timneth concerning a joint agreement for animal control services with NOCO humane.
A second. Comment quick, please. Uh, I'm holding my comments regarding the contract for the next actionable item. Wanted to notate that.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call?
Oh, so something that I did want to just clarify and, and maybe the town attorney can address this, it specifically states in the IGA that we approve the agreement, literally the first item under this, so I understand technically it's a separate technical step that we have to do. But it says, whereas, reading whereas, and I'm going to go to number one, whereas the Town of Wellington is Whereas the Town of Wellington desires to become party to agreement to expand animal control services within the town. And then if you go down to number one, it says the agreement is hereby approved. That is part of the IGA is that we approve the agreement. So I don't know, and it says the copy of the agreement is attached here too and made a part hereof. So I don't see how you can change the agreement that we said we're agreeing to that's currently attached. So my understanding is the IGA is saying we approve the agreement as it stands, not a changed or edited version of the agreement. Is that a correct understanding?
The resolution said, in the resolution where it refers to the agreement, it's referring to the IGA itself. So it's what you just read.
The IGA. Okay.
Resolution Number 10-2024, which is under consideration right now, is about approval of the intergovernmental agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Good question for clarification, trustee Gator.
Okay, we had a, we had a motion, we had a second. Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Mason.
Yes.
Trustee Teetz.
Yes.
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustee Gator.
No.
Mayor Protem McDonald.
Abstained.
Uh, Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
With five in favor, one against, and one abstention, the motion carries and the resolution is approved.
Thank you. Uh, will you please, Mr. Clerk, read the title for item E2?
Continued Resolution Number 08-2024, approving a joint agreement for animal control services with NOCO Humane.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia will present.
Thank you, Mayor and trustees, Patty Garcia, Town Administrator. This resolution is to consider the joint agreement for services with NOCO Humane for 2024. The services to be provided to Wellington, Timneth, and Berthoud by NOCO Humane, identified in Section 2 of the agreement and begins on page 35 of your board packet. As has been reported in prior presentations, the town does not have an animal control officer, so needs the support of an outside agency at this time to provide those services. The town's neighborhood services officer is the point of contact and a liaison between NOCO Humane, the residents, and Laramo County Sheriff's Office. The town issues friendly reminders and notices for animal issues that are not time-sensitive, such as barking dogs and things like that. Laramo County Sheriff's Office deputies are not specialized or equipped to properly handle calls, but are often the most readily available to respond to situations until NOCO Humane can arrive. This agreement would not prohibit residents from reaching out and helping each other find and locate lost dogs and animals. It's not going to stop what's currently happening. This is just an extra, an extra piece that would help support those animals, those dogs that trustee Wigan mentioned and things like that. Or if someone is afraid, or if their dog is lost, that gives them a point of contact to call, which I have done that. My animals have all been rescues. I love them to death, and they do run off. And I've had animal control find my animals and give me a call, and I've had to go and pick them up. So I understand the heartache and the heartbreak that happens. But it's, it's part of us trying to keep the community safe. If the agreement is approved, NOCO Humane will submit quarterly reports to the town, which will be included in the Board of Trustees packets, which would assist with some oversight. If the board directs, a work session can be scheduled so the board can review the municipal code for any changes or updates they would like to have. Judy Calhoun is in attendance, as I've said, and she is here to answer questions that you might have. I know there's obviously some questions about the contract, and she would be the best person to answer those.
Perfect.
And I do want to let you know, I have reached out to Dr. Zadina, and we've been in communication back and forth a couple of different times. I've been offering services from the town to help come up with solutions for 2025. I also spoke with Dawn Peacock today, who helped organize a meeting that was held before this meeting tonight. And, and she understands that this is going to be a process and understands that there's going, it's going to take some time. We can't do this overnight, but we can certainly get it done in three to six months, probably, you know, to have something to present in time for the budget.
Thank you.
Uh, questions, I guess we'll start with, uh, trustee Wigan.
Okay, I think you've already discussed this, but just want to clarify, animals that are chipped, if they're out there, well, what is your procedure?
So, so for animals that have any kind of identification, a rabies tag, a license tag, a microchip, we do, to the best of our ability, based on the circumstances, try to trace that information and find the owner. My understanding is that the situation Dr. Zadina describes was the middle of the night in the middle of a snowstorm. There are situations where our officers, particularly if they have another emergency call to go to, may not be able to do that. But the normal course of events, normal day, is if they pick up an animal to, yes, scan it for a microchip before they bring it back to the shelter and try to trace that chip.
Also too, I think you have in here where there is help for people that are not very financially well off too. Can you kind of address that?
So give me.
Well, I mean, if somebody, I mean, if, if a $200 bill is going to put them in financial straits.
So our, our client service staff do have the ability on occasion to waive impound fees, to waive impound and boarding fees, and they do occasionally do that. We, it depends on the, again, it depends on the circumstances. But yes, there are situations under which we do that. The other thing I would like to say is that example of a house fire, if, and, and it's fantastic to have Dr. Zadina respond to something like that locally, be able to take the animal back to his clinic. But if we were called to assist the fire department, there would be no charge to the owner for the housing of that pet for up to five days and under protective custody. And we do, we're a little flexible on that depending, again, depending on the circumstances. And there is no charge to the town for that either. That is entirely donor-supported. So those kinds of circumstances.
Last question.
Yes.
Service animals. How do you look on that?
So, um, service animals are defined in, in federal law. Typically, if, if a service animal is loose, it can, and I do understand the concept that if the owner, the, the, the person that the service animal is trained for, the dog or miniature horse, if that person is down and they try to go get somebody. But if that, if that dog is simply running loose, we don't necessarily know it's a service animal. So we would treat it as we would a, a normal animal. My understanding is that, yes, service, service dogs can get loose, but that it doesn't typically happen that often. They're trained to be close to the person they're providing the service to.
And again, you still go back and you check their license.
Yep, we check microchip, we check license, we check, I mean, we look for any type of identification. Our, our goal, and I don't have the stats, but our officers return animals in the field on a very regular basis. So without, we would prefer they not come back to the shelter. We would prefer they go directly home.
Well, I recall a story where they checked the chip, went to the house. Owner wasn't there. They took it back to the clinic and then drove all the way back out to drop it off to the owner when they were back home. So it's pretty incredible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Teetz.
Okay, so I do want to state, I am in support of NOCO Humane. I like what you guys do. I understand that there's things that need to be worked out. I have a question, and this comes directly from the public. Euthanization numbers, how often are they provided and are they township-specific?
Um, so we, we provide reports to the town that does include that information with regard to animals from the town. We also publish on an annual basis in our annual report, our total statistics. We also, as required by any agent, by any shelter or rescue that is licensed in the state of Colorado, we report our numbers to the Pet Animal Care Facilities Act, Department of Agriculture, on an annual basis as well.
Got it. So just to our town, is those euthanization records, I just want to verify really quick.
You get those as part of your quarterly report.
And they're township-specific?
Correct.
Okay. The accountability thing is what I'm hearing is a big thing. Have you guys ever had anyone from the public be able to attend your board meeting?
So as I explained to Dr. Zadina, we do have public comment at the beginning of every board meeting. The public, however, is not welcome to stay for the entire board meeting. But we do, and we have had on a variety of occasions, on a variety of issues, public comment at the beginning of the board meeting.
Got it.
It's a process for, there's, it's, in some ways, it's similar to what many cities and towns use. There's a time limit. I, it's been a while since we've had somebody come for public comment, so I don't want to be quoted on the length of time. But there's a timeframe for the public to make their, their comment. So, yes.
Got it. So, and that would be one of my issues going forward with this is the fact that all of our residents here, if there is issues, if there is complaints, they have a voice. They can go to those meetings, our meetings, they can speak up, they have full attendance, right? Unless we have executive session, and then of course, everyone besides our board has to leave.
Right. But you are also a government entity. We're a private nonprofit.
Right. No, and I understand that.
Yeah, so a little bit different. We do have a complaint procedure that, you know, if you, if you have a complaint, you bring it to the officer, it goes to the sergeants, it goes then to our director. If it's not resolved, then it comes to me. Many, I don't, I don't know what the Town of Wellington's process is, but many of our other contract entities have also, within their own, so within their cities or the county, a complaint procedure that can come to the, in your case, the town, that then goes to us that we have to respond so that you're seeing it. I don't know if you have something, I've not investigated that, so I don't know if you have something like that.
Got it.
Can I also say, trustee Teetz, in terms of the accountability, as a nonprofit, our tax returns are public information. We provide you on that quarterly basis. You are also provided organizational financials. We also provide you on an annual basis, our audit. As I mentioned, we report annually to the Department of Ag under the Pet Animal Care Facilities Act on our statistics. So I would say as a nonprofit, we have significantly more publicly available information regarding our organization than private companies typically do.
Got it. And my only concern would come in is where it's, this is not our money, it's taxpayer money. And that kind of accountability is something that I know some are concerned about. My final issue, so one, I would have liked to have an RFP sent out when Ms. Garcia and I had this discussion almost a year ago. It would have been nice to have something organized with the expectation of we are looking at you guys as a provider, but we also offered no opportunity for anyone in our town, except like a month and a half before this process. So I appreciate that we are going to look at what that contract might look like, what Mr. Doctor Zadina's expectations would be related to any of those items. But I still, at the end of the day, and this is something that I feel is the most important and what will prevent me from voting this forward, is my conversation I had with Mr. Sapienza. And it was related to a section of our NOW ordinance. There was actually a few sections that if we vote and approve this, we are going directly against our ordinance. Um, I did reach out. I did inform him that I was going to reach out and get further clarification on a few things I had questions on. And the application process where it specifically states written application for licenses, which shall include name, address of the applicant, description of the animal, and appropriate fee and rabies certificate. The downfall is, is this requirement, it specifically states, shall be made to the town. So I have a difficult time, and I know it was explained to me that there is allowances. So I did go back and read what Mr. Sapienza had clarified for me as a licensing authority. But the section that I am specifically talking about does not list out that we assigned that section of the agreement to any other licensing authority besides the town. So I would love to have a, possibly a special meeting where we look at this ordinance within the next two weeks before this contract is approved. I would love to approve it, but approving your contract specifically goes against the ordinance that we have written in place at this time. So I struggle with the understanding of being able to approve a contract for animal services through NOCO Humane with the intergovernmental agreement. But our ordinance says something completely different. So we would literally be approving a contract that is counterproductive to what our ordinance is written as now.
Which, yeah, so that way I'm on the same page.
Nope, you're fine. So this is the ordinance that I pulled off MUNICODE for.
I just, the name.
It's the licensing requirement.
Yeah.
Yep.
Mr. Sapienza, can you, oh, can you speak to that?
Yeah, and I did have some conversations with trustee Teetz on this matter. And she's referring to Division 3 of Article 4 of Chapter 7. It's the, it's the animal licensing requirements of our code. In there, it's, again, that's, sorry, Division 3 of Article 4. Article 4 is about animals. And so in Article 4, there's a definition section. And one of those definitions, and I'd explain this, is the licensing authority. And I'll read that definition. The licensing authority means the Board of Trustees or anybody designated by the Board of Trustees to have authority to promulgate rules pursuant to this section and to enforce provisions of this code. And then the later section that you're referring to is the licensing section. And that's under the authority of the licensing authority. So by adopting this contract, we're appointing the NOCO Humane as the licensing authority for the town. That's what's been done for a long time. NOCO Humane has always issued the licenses. The Humane Society has, I believe, issued the licenses and checked vaccines and records. So the town has used the NOCO Humane, the Humane Society, as the licensing authority for as, as long as any records I could find. So I, I do not believe that this contract contradicts our, our existing code. I believe it's fully in compliance with them.
Thank you. Anything further, trustee Teetz?
Nope, that'll be it.
Thank you. Trustee Gator.
All right. So I guess, I mean, I raised some of my concerns earlier. I guess really my question is, is, I don't know if it's so much for you as for Mr. Sapienza. This is an agreement that is between two other towns. We can't just carve it up and cut it up and do what we want. If we wanted to change it, that would have to then go back to the other municipalities and they would, and NOCO Humane would all have to agree to any changes that we wanted to make. Is that correct?
If the board today wants to adopt amendments to this, absolutely, those would have to go back to NOCO Humane and to other towns. So there's no, this board does not have the unilateral authority to change a contract between four different entities.
Okay. So I guess the one question I have for you, because we've talked about, and you guys brought up a good point, right? It's your ordinance, you have it, we're enforcing your ordinances. Is there something that we can put in place that says, okay, hey, we're going to put a timeframe of, you know, whatever it is, okay, maybe by May, or if, a short timeframe to say, hey, we're going to revisit this ordinance. That's concerning, specifically like the dog off leash, that seems to be the big one that keeps coming up. Is there a way to have something set out, I don't know if this has to be in the contract, or if that can be between us and NOCO Humane that says, until this date, we will not write summones for this. We maybe educate people, let them know, but that we don't write summones because the board is actively working on revising that. Is that something that's a possibility?
So I think as we explained earlier, typically what we do, what we certainly have done with both Timneth and Berthoud, when we've initially come in, is yes, indeed, that is education initially. And however, as I think we discussed at the work session a few weeks ago, my timeframes, sorry. There are situations where, you know, you can do education. We've seen, we have situations where somebody walks away, they take their dog off leash again. I would recommend that we, rather than you specifically say no summonses, we have some understanding that our primary goal that our primary goal, and it always is, is to do education and to our primary thing is to get people to follow the ordinance. But there are those situations where I would suggest you don't necessarily want us to not then follow up. Um, I believe Sergeant Cherry's example was the, you know, parking ticket. It's torn up, thrown on the ground. He's going to give another parking ticket type of situation. So I believe that was his similar example. We can have some discussion around what that exactly looks like, but I will tell you again, our typical, what we've been doing in Timnith and Berthid is that education. What we do in Fort Collins and Loveland is that educational piece. We also remind people, and especially in areas like this, that are relatively close to unincorporated areas of the county, that there is no um at-large ordinance in the in the county. So if you want to have your dog off leash, you can go into an area of the county and have it off leash. So that's off also often an option that our officers will say, understand, and you know, you, that's not allowed in this town. However, you could, you can do it in the unincorporated areas of the county.
Okay. And then the second question I have is, with the quarterly reports, how would those differ from the reports that we received? Because I know we received a couple of years' worth of kind of this invoices and statements. How would those reports differ?
So they do, they do look different. So they include significantly more information on them. They include as is in this contract, number of licenses issued, number of calls, average response time for per call for non-priority and priority, number of animals impounded, number of impound days, number of hours spent by No Cohumane personnel on priority, non-priority, number of animals euthanized on the premises, number of residents participating in humane education programs, and number of complaints received.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Triski. Trustee Daly.
I have I have several questions, but before that, I want to give a heads up to Sergeant Cherry. I also have some questions for you if you're available for them. And second, I don't want to.
It's a wild card.
Yeah, I know. I was like, I didn't warn her I was going to ask questions. So this is my, the smallest amount of warning that I have available to give you. Okay. The the first thing I want to acknowledge, I know there's going to be a chance for a public comment as well, so or I don't know, I'm not going to speak on behalf of the mayor, but um the things that I heard and and from our conversations prior and from tonight, I just want to reiterate, and then I have some questions for you. Or I guess maybe the thing I realized tonight is regarding the impound fees, not just the ticket fees, that that was a light bulb that went off that I didn't realize before. So thank you for bringing that to my attention. The major concerns that I've heard are really the caring and compassion and that will be for both residents and their pets. These are the concerns I'm hearing, right? The other concerns I hear is that will limit the ability for neighbors to take care of neighbors. So before I ask any questions, I want to make it very clear that my behavior and how I take care of neighbors and how neighbors take care of me is never going to change regardless of what kind of contract that we approve. Uh, my dogs got out yesterday because it's spring break and bikes came out for the first time and all the all the gates were left open. Um, and I had three texts from three different neighbors and one business contact me before I realized that my dogs were loose. So um, and then I ran out my, and then probably everybody saw me running around in my slippers. So, but we found them, everybody was fine. And that's neighbors taking into care of neighbors, and nothing's going to change about that because this is Wellington. So we'll continue taking care of neighbors. So I just want to make sure that that's very clear, that my behavior won't change, and I know my neighbors won't either. Okay, my question, I do, I just want to acknowledge that. And then the other pieces that I want to acknowledge as well is a lot of these questions and concerns are really fall back on our board. So the things that I I want to acknowledge is that we're the policymakers, so we're creating the policy which is enforced. We've already acknowledged that there's problems there. Okay, so that's, but that's our board. The other things that are um within our strategic plan, we talk about, oh, we need a plan for growth, smart growth. And this is, this is a symptom of growth. This is absolutely what this is because we used to have an ad hoc uh contract that we're no longer eligible for because of the growth of our town. So this this in my mind does fall within our strategic plan. So um effort and resources towards research in this and alternate solutions in the future, I think falls within the scope of our strategic plan. So I wanted to make that point. Other things are uh ordinances relating to licensing and enforcement, uh forcible items. And then um the responsibility of us to pursue alternate options. I think that's been made very clear, that that's what the community is interested in, and I would support that as well. So with those acknowledged, these are my questions for you. The policy on returning animals, we've already talked about that. Is there, is that documented in a handbook or policy procedure document? So if and when there is a complaint about it, that we can hold accountable to a policy?
I I have not read the training manual for our officers. So I do not know what that training manual says specifically regarding
Yeah.
returning animals.
Okay.
I do know, so besides what the officers do in the field, we, through our client services staff, we also try to trace ownership. So animals are scanned in the field, they're scanned again on intake into the shelter.
Okay.
Just in case a microchip was missed. They are, our um client services staff, um, will try to trace an animal that's come in, a stray animal, a lost animal coming in with lost reports based on description, location, those type of things to try to match up. That is done at least twice during the animal's stay with us before, or during the stray hold period before anything else happens. So we make a a considerable effort to try to trace animals. The stray animals are on our website with photos as soon as we can. Our website, those, that part of our website is updated every fifteen minutes. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of work besides what's done in the field by our officers to also try to get animals home.
Okay. Regarding uh the contract itself, it does mention that we would designate a procedure in which to bring complaints formally from the town of Wellington. Can you explain, or do you have examples of how those procedures are currently outlined for the other communities that you've served in the last year?
So I don't know with Timnith and Berthid, I don't know how those are working. I will give you an example of Fort Collins, and I realize
That's fine.
Fort Collins is our eight hundred pound gorilla in Laramie County, but they actually have an online system. So complaints can come directly to us, but the city of Fort Collins also has an online system where and it's not just animal control related, it's for anything in the city.
We have something similar for anybody listening.
Okay.
Yeah, we do have.
Then, and then, so animal-related um complaints are then sent directly to, in our case, it's Regonate, our Director of Animal Protection and Control, to respond to because typically they're they're regarding the animal control services. If they're regarding our sheltering services, then somebody else drafts the response, but Animal Protection and Control Department handles responding back, if that makes sense.
Okay, that's great. And I I think the fact that uh I understand from our, from the town perspective, how we would collect complaints or concerns. It's the same way as if you saw a pothole, you could go on our online and and report it, provide a picture, you know, those kind of things. So um us receiving complaints, we can solicit those too. I'm sure there's many ways we can do that from a communication standpoint, but within our procedure, can we define the time in which our complaints have to be acknowledged? Accountability is sort of associated with that, because it says, part of the contract says, we will define a procedure. So I want to know the scope of that.
I think that's really a question for Patty. I mean, if you, I don't know what you have currently. There are times when it can take us a day or two. It typically doesn't take us more than a couple of days.
Sure.
But we'll often, if we have to pull up camera footage from one of our body cams, if we're pulling up recordings from our dispatch call, something of that nature. Or need to talk with an officer who might be off that day. It can take a couple of days. But typically, we try to get back. I know with the Fort Collins, access Fort Collins ones, we try to get back with in at least a few days. So it's not something that takes weeks to respond to.
Okay, great. And I I'm not expecting same day kind of thing. So, but but my concern is, we make a complaint. We make a complaint, like what what is the accountability to make sure it's acknowledged and addressed? So so long as our contract indicates that we can create a procedure with you, you know, in my mind, that that then leaves the uh contingencies of that procedure up to us to define. So I just wanted to know if there's limitations of how how and what we could include in that procedure. Obviously, it needs to be fair and allow you guys to respond appropriately, but I don't want us to just throw complaints into, you know, a wormhole and never expect or see any responses, and that be acceptable. So, and I say that as an extreme exaggeration. I'm not, I'm not saying that that would happen, but I just want to be able to offer assurances and knowing that part of the contract indicates that we get to create that procedure. And then, so so that's the only point I was trying to make there then. Other questions I have, education program is included in the contract. What does that look like?
So that typically, for us, it typically looks like a um social media. With a new community, we'll try to do some targeted things within the community to let them know those kinds of things. If there's um, if there's a desire for us to come up and do some presentations to community groups, that type of thing, we've done that. We sometimes have HOAs that want us to come and talk to their residents about how the services work. So it's those type of, that's those type of things typically.
Okay. Provide a public education program in each town to its residents regarding No Cohumane services and each town's animal control ordinances. So to me, that seems more like the, more than social media, but looks, it's, I'm glad that you guys are open to other options, so. But it is really as a add, as needed or as requested type thing.
Typically, we do, I mean, so on our website, we do keep um the ordinances. We put links to the town ordinances on our website. So those are available if somebody's looking. It's a dropdown. Um, you can click on Fort Collins,
Okay.
Loveland, whatever, um, and get directly to their their ordinances.
Okay.
Um, so we do keep that active on our website. But yeah.
Is there any possibility of of requesting sheltering services in Wellington prior to impounding dogs? Or pets?
What?
There's other kinds of animals apparently. I only have dogs.
So asked, um, i- in what way? We don't have a shelter up here.
Right. Is there any other way to determine if if there's room or people available to accept or shelter dogs or animals? Like, let's say, for example, if if part of that policy of returning animals is you do contact them, but they're not home. Right? That scenario came up.
Right.
And if that were the case, if they were to give consent, could you then drop off the dog at Tabby Road?
That's, if if that's something Dr. Zadina is wanting, and that's between you, that's got to be between you and Dr. Zadina and then the community member. We have had situation, we have situations where somebody will say, I'm not home. Can you drop it off with my neighbor? That is not, I mean, it's it's not daily, but it's not uncommon.
And that's acceptable.
And that's perfectly acceptable. I will tell you, I had a situation in my old neighborhood where I was out running, caught a loose dog. Rabies tag, but no ID tag. So I called at that time, Laramie Humane Society, they traced the rabies tag, they gave me the phone number of the owner. I called the owner, I got ahold of them. They were not at home, they were somewhere, Denver or somewhere. They actually were like, oh, the door's open, you can just put him back in the house. And I've done that. I mean, that's.
Only laugh because I've asked somebody to throw my dog over the fence before.
Well, or more common.
It's a door fence.
Yeah, more common, it's um, I'm not home, the fence is unlocked, can you?
Okay.
Or the gate's unlocked, can you put him behind the fence?
Okay.
But yeah, I've, I mean, I was a little shocked, but they were like, oh, the door's open.
Okay. All right. Well, in Wellington, everybody's everybody's neighbor. So I I I think that answers my question. So if if you because that's the thing, is people aren't home when their dogs are loose. That's the whole point why they're loose. So if they were to give you express permission to say, drop it off at my neighbor Tabby Road, then that would be acceptable. Okay, that's great. I still would love to see a policy, or I know you're saying you don't have the handbook on you, but I think that would be valuable information for us to have in the future when we're reviewing procedure. And uh, do you, part of your education, do you do any kind of microchipping services or anything like that within the community?
So we do offer at the shelter microchip services. Um, so if somebody wants to bring their animal in, we'll microchip. We do work um with Animal Friends Alliance to do some community, a couple of um healthy pet clinics. I believe we offer at those health, and they're they're typically targeted to particular communities.
Okay.
That are underserved communities. And I believe at those, if we if we can get the microchips donated, we do the microchips for free at those.
Okay, because microchips seem to be the answers for anybody who's a pet owner.
Let me, let me do, say one thing about microchips. It is really important that people keep their information updated on microchips. We had a case today of a cat that was, whose tail was caught wrapped in the axle of a car.
In Loveland, you called our shop to get it taken out.
Did you? What's the, what's the?
We.
I I I left before the tow truck filled up.
The cat is stable, the cat.
Okay.
As far as initial x-rays, nothing broken. There was a major wound in his leg. But um, he's stable, he, or she, she's stable, she's at the shelter. Where I was going is that that cat had a microchip. We scanned the microchip. We got ahold of a person who said well, essentially, um, I divorced, my husband took custody of the cat. Here's my husband's phone number. Called the husband, the husband said, I rehomed that cat. I don't know who I rehomed it to.
Wow, is that.
Please, 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 public, public service announcement. Um, and Dr. Zadina, do you want to join me in this public service announcement? Please keep your microchip information updated. If you transfer your pet to a friend or family member or somebody else, please encourage them to update the microchip information. Please, please, please.
Are you guys willing to have a member of the Wellington staff or official person attend board meetings?
No.
No, that is a closed.
They can come to the public comment section. Yeah.
All right. Uh, those are all my questions for you. I I have questions for Cherry, but I don't know if you want to.
Might as well do it right now.
Let's go.
Are are you ready, Sergeant Cherry? I did, I don't want to volunteer you.
Like I did? I gave him notice. Yeah. Um, what is the policy for LCSO during house explosions or what? Do you guys have the ability to choose who you call first? With your discretion?
We would normally just call No Cohumane for those those types of things. In that particular case, we didn't know what the fire department was doing. They were incident command over that particular scene.
Okay.
So they made the call. But had it been our call, we would immediately be calling over to No Cohumane. I don't necessarily care where the animals go, as long as they're being taken care of.
Right.
But that would be our normal process.
Okay. And is that, that is stone process, or you guys have any kind of leeway or potential for options?
There's, there's nothing written into our policies regarding that. We have a phenomenal relationship with No Cohumane. We have for years and years. Uh, it's just been consistent. So we just automatically go go to them.
Okay, that makes sense. It's a single call. It's a, you know, I get it. So my other questions are, and just for anybody watching tonight that maybe hadn't participated before, if in in short, you can just summarize maybe limitations that you guys have associated with animal control from a deputy standpoint.
Sure. Well, uh, I know that Ms. Garcia already talked about some of our training and our equipment. We have very minimal training when it comes to to dealing with with animals. Obviously, I have a dog. Obviously, I have a dog, but my dog may be completely different from someone else's dog. I don't have the equipment to deal with, you know, loose dogs or dogs that might be cornered, frayed, those types of things. We certainly don't have the, well, we have a prisoner partition. I don't know that I want to necessarily get into the whole custody thing again, but, but we, we have a prisoner partition. Where we have in the past, if we had absolutely no other place to put a, put an animal, we can put them back there. But I don't, I don't like doing that, that's, it's not designed for that purpose. So I don't have catch poles and, and I don't have a really reliable place to, to put a dog, a cat, some other animal, to, to transport them where they need to go.
Those are all my questions, thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you. Trustee Mason?
I don't think I've got any questions. Ms. Calhoun, I, I appreciate your answer on all of these. It seems like the board's had, had a lot of questions and I, I do appreciate those answers. Hopefully that helps stem some of our residents' concerns. I thi, I think there's a little bit of maybe the, the, the crazy dog catcher mentality going around and I, and I think hopefully you've helped relax a little bit of that. I, I do want to emphasize to our vets in the room that, you know, certainly, guys, we, we do want to see you come forward to us with something on paper that we can actually look at and take forward. We'd love to do that, but until we've got that, I, you know, this is basically the option we have. I, I would hate to see this contract expire and God forbid something happened to somebody where this board did not have a policy in place for something like this and then literally, I feel like that would be our responsibility at that point. We, we, we screwed up and didn't provide the services that should have been available to our community. So I do want to see this passed, and like I said, I'm certainly open to looking at something else in the future, but we, we need to have something in front of us, so.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Thank you for all of the information and detailed presentation. I don't have any questions or comments at this time.
Thank you. Yeah, you, I mean, all my questions have been answered over and over again, so thank you very much. I will now open this up for public comment.
Hi Karen Eifert, I live in Thunels. So my first comment is, I'm really concerned, and I'm sorry, I can't say new names very easily, very well. So I'll just refer to you as ma'am, the lady from-
Oh, Judy.
Is it Judy, that's easier to remember, okay. My concern is that Judy said that she does not think that her staff would be able to identify a service dog. And my huge concern with that is service dogs are clearly labeled with a service vest. They also have it on their tags. And I would be really concerned that anybody, let alone a professional agency that can, clearly their employees can read and write, and clearly these things are written on our dogs for that reason, so they can be acknowledged as service dogs. And second of all, I would like to point out that service dogs are not just dogs, not just canines. When I have a service dog, which my service dog just washed out, he wasn't, he didn't make the bar. And that's why I've only brought him once here and, other than that, I didn't feel it was safe for public to be around him until he had the proper training that's necessary. That dog is medical equipment. And in the state of Colorado, it's defined as medical equipment. So if my dog does get away from me, and maybe it's just because he had to go potty, but I have my disabilities and I can't go chase down that dog physically, I cannot. If that dog does not respond to me and come back to me, and it goes onto another street, maybe John sees him and he texts me really quick, "Hey Karen, I saw your dog at Cleveland," and whatever. And then I get a text from Trustee Daly, I'm sorry Rebecca. I'm like, and she tells me she saw him at another part of town. And then I get a phone call, I get a phone call from No Co Humane, who does not really have a policy on service dogs itself. And those are durable medical equipment for me. So if they transport my medical equipment down past Loveland, Colorado, and I live in Wellington, Colorado, there's going to be a liability, liability problem. Because when we have the service dog insurance, it goes for the attorneys and it goes for the rights of the animal as well. As much as I have rights in this state and in other states in the US for disability rights, that dog has disability rights and is protected as well. So what I'd really like to see is for No Co Humane to come up with something. And maybe before you all even sign this, because I'm going to tell you, I'm not the only, and I, I don't even have a service dog right now, like I said, mine washed out. But I know many people who have service dogs, and if you transport their dogs down to Loveland without their permission, they are not going to be the kindest people in the room, and I would not blame them one iota. But that's going to come back to this board because you have made this decision without having something in place first. As much as Trustee Mason just said, if we don't have something in place, we're going to be in trouble. This is same for this type of population as well. And I'd also like to point out that when Judy was just talking, she was talking about education, and I really would like to see that happen, because you all were very lenient for years about educating people at 4th of July and not giving them tickets. Even our town attorney had said for that to happen. And this board, different people on the board have talked about that as well, that that education needed to happen and not give a ticket. Even our Mayor Protem talked about that. I think the same thing should follow through. If we have to put up with these people for the 90 days, hey Chad, I'll help you write whatever you want to. And I'm sure that there's other people in Wellington that would love to help you as well. But if we can only have to keep these people for 90 days and get it figured out in our own town, I really hope that our town can come together. If you want to know how to get ahold of me, contact Trustee Teets or the mayor, they both have my phone number and so does Trustee Daly. I'll be able to help in any way, in any capacity. We need to bring this back to our, our community.
Thank you.
Just want to address a few things, just back to the whole situation with my dogs. It didn't happen at midnight, it happened about 5 o'clock, so there was ample opportunity to call me, it didn't happen. So I think that's probably a thing that'll probably happen in the future. Second, to address Trustee Mason, one, I'd be happy to come up with something for you, but there was no time given. And as you heard, we found it as a whim because some of us were asked, we looked it up, it was the next night. So nobody asked us and nobody approached anyway, so I think it's part, your job's to do that and it's our job to bring you something, but when we're not asked, we don't know what to do. Thirdly, my main concern is also sticking point, once again, is having a representative at the meetings. We're the consumer, they're selling us something, they should write something in for us and we demand it. I mean, if they want our tax money, which they're getting, we should have it. So one, you know, one thing, actually, they get a third of their budget from taxpayers and they get money from my clinic and other clinics in the areas, that's additional tax money through our rabies database, because they use our rabies database to do licenses. And that's things that I've built up for them to send notices out. So we should have more say in this, is my thing, you know, and, and what I think we should do is, I know you guys want to approve it tonight in a hurry, but one, we're in a rush. What, what did we do before this, is the question, because we're suddenly in a rush. What, what did we do before this? Like, can we keep it the same? I'd love to take animals in if people, the control officer will drop them off, well, it's a, no big deal. But that's written in the code that says that's the first option, drop them off at the clinic. I won't even charge for it, I mean, unless that's a sit overnight thing and we've got to take care of them. And then third, you know, the issue of, you know, taking the shelter first. Once again, we should write that into the code, but I think we should have an opportunity to write the code first before we approve the contract. So like Trustee Gator said, so that's what I got, right?
Thank you, thanks.
Hi Dawn Peacock. So I understand the reporting requirements of a nonprofit, I understand it pretty intimately. And to be honest, I don't care about the money, the reporting of the money on a quarterly or annual basis. I care about the standard operating procedures. Where am I going to see that in the report? I'm guessing I'm not. And to be honest, I, I don't think that Judy understands how she's coming off. I don't think that she realizes how arrogant she is coming off. That, yes, you are the CEO of a nonprofit organization. But nonprofit organizations, typically, majority of them, are about the community and about helping people and helping a community. And I am absolutely seeing none of that right now. The, the hubris is astounding. And the absolute rejection of any sort of transparency, other than financial, which I couldn't care a flip about, and accountability for the treatment of our pets. And I'm sorry, my pets are my family, they, they just are. And, and, yeah. I'm saying let's get 90 days on the books and I will do whatever, as well as Karen. You know, we'll do whatever it takes to create this entity, to get that MOU together with you guys. I obviously am not a veterinarian or anything, but I am willing to put in the time to do whatever it takes because our town deserves some compassion, some respect, and some accountability. And I am freaking done.
Thank you. Any further questions from the board? Trustee Teets?
I do, so if I could have Ms. Calhoun answer one question for me related to the weekend services that you provide. I know it was explained that animals get transferred to CSU. Is that all the time after hours, that's immediately where you pick them up and take them as CSU?
No, we only use CSU for emergency veterinary care, either after hours or when we don't have a veterinarian on site.
Okay, so when you guys pick up animals after hours, you guys won't be here only responding to someone who calls in after 5 o'clock, Monday through Friday?
So, so the way this contract works, what we are doing with Timoth and Berthardt and Patty helped confirm, it's Thursday through-
Tuesday.
Tues, no, Thursday through Monday. We don't respond to calls on Tuesday and Wednesday. However, dispatch still answers the call. If it's an emergency, we will still respond. And I forget the actual hours that we have people in the, in the towns. On emergency calls, we respond at any point in time. So does that-
Got it, yeah, I wasn't even aware that we had set dates yet for the services.
So those are the days we are currently providing service in Timoth and Berthardt.
Okay.
Should all three of you, the three of you need to have the same days.
Correct.
And so should the three of you decide to change those, we can change those. We've found that those are the days that we have the most calls. So best to have somebody, an officer actually assigned those days.
Got it, understandable. So if someone calls you on a Tuesday, midday, and someone says, "I have a dog running around in my neighborhood," you guys, unless it's an emergency, will not be responding that day.
Correct, however, I do believe, I'd have to look. This is where, I believe Rego's answered a lot of these questions in the past and I'm, when it comes to the details of how exactly we operate, but I do believe dog, a dog at large would be an emergency call that we would still respond to.
Okay.
But we wouldn't respond to a barking complaint, something of that nature.
Got it, and I don't know if we had actually had that completely answered or we were still waiting on clarification on what that emergency service meant. So that's the, the only other thing is, is the clarification for me as far as the, the legal side of it. Other than that, I don't have any more questions.
Thank you, Trustee Wiegand?
No questions.
Mayor Protem? Trustee Mason? Trustee Daly?
I'm in favor of approving this contract. With that said, and these aren't included as amendments, these are stipulations that I was hoping that we could provide direction for, is I, I would like us to pursue alternate partners for the next year as options, to understand what that, what the operationally that would look like, as well as cost. That's one of my stipulations. The other one is, I know Sergeant Cherry is here, but I would like to understand or, or communicate with the fire district to see what their policy is for their first call. Obviously, they've called Chad in the past as their first call. Is that their policy? If so, then fantastic. If it's not, maybe we can have a discussion about or encourage them to do so locally first. So talking about those policies. The other one is that we need to immediately act on and define the procedure that we're entitled to do as part of the contract as to how we provide feedback and complaints and include within that policy timelines and stipulations of accountability to those complaints. And then I guess the other thing in stipulation or, or just education is to make sure that everybody is microchipping their pets, updating the information, putting tags on their dogs, and then maybe is aware of that they can ask a neighbor to care for their, their dogs until they're, or pet. There's so many kinds of pets. I have dogs. Care for their pets until they're able to retrieve them. So those, again, just a public service announcement, but those other stipulations I think are required. And, and to, I think we owe that to our public based on the, the mass concern, but we also have a public state, uh, safety concern too. And if, if LC SO is not equipped, because they have more important or urgent items that they need to be responding to, and, and if we don't have something in place in the case of an emergency, our responsibility is the safety of our residents, and our residents are our pets too in this case. So in the case of so many of the other items included here, not just dogs at large, but those are things that we must provide services for our community. And right now, this is the option that we have before us.
Thank you, Trustee Gator?
I guess the one question I had for the board, I raised the idea earlier and I appreciate your answer to your thoughts on that as to putting something in place to a deadline, maybe we say the end of May, to say, up to that point, we do not want enforcement on that dog off leash or whatever the ordinance is. And that is our commitment up to that point is, it gives us a month, not a lot of time, but to look at that, decide, are we go, maybe we don't change anything. If we don't change anything, then they go and enforce that. But is the board, I understand I have my concerns, but is the board willing to entertain that to say, we're willing to give this direction, to say, this is an issue we're going to work through. So until we have, until this date, we don't want this portion. You can educate, but we do not want enforcement on this piece while we figure it's, again, I don't know how, obviously, amending the contract messes with everybody else, so that's not really something. But is that something the rest of the board is willing to say, this is direction we're willing to give? I don't know how that works, I know Dan's looking at me like, what?
I, I, I'm, my question is which portions-
For dog off, dog off? The only dog, the dog off leash is the one right now, and I don't, again, we, they, I don't know how that works.
And with dog off leash, you know, dog off, when a summons comes into municipal court for a, a dog at large, I'd say rarely is that, at the current moment, rarely is that simply somebody walking with a dog off leash. Usually, dog at large is actually a dog that runs out of a house or something. So saying officially, you know, not enforcing dog at large, that's a very-
If someone's in a park playing with their pet and they don't have them on a leash, are they, if, if they write them a summons, are they writing them a dog at large summons?
That would be a dog at large summons, yes.
Got it, okay.
But I'm saying a blanket statement of don't enforce dog at large is unworkable. In terms of, because it's used for so many different things.
It's used for multiple things, okay.
I will say, I'm looking at the contract, it's on page 36 of the packet, section four, about commission to enforce ordinances. And, and one of the lines in here, it says, "The commissioned animal control officers shall be authorized to serve summons and complaints, which will be filed with local municipal court." So I do want to emphasize that when a summons does come in, that's not the, that's not the end of the story. There's, goes to court. We, I'm the prosecutor, I mean, I am the prosecutor for the town and you've been there, so there's additional processes. And the second line there says, "Each town shall instruct such officers regarding enforcement of the town's animal control ordinances." And really, that section's in there about helping edge, the town, educating No Co Humane and its officers on the ordinances that we do have. So I think that line in there, which says, "Instruct said officers regarding enforcement of those ordinances," I think applies perfectly to what you're saying.
Okay.
No need to change the contract, and I really would like, I think a blanket statement of don't enforce dog at large is, is difficult. But I think we can work with animal control officers. I'll tell you right now, I am hearing exactly what you're saying with, with that portion of dog at large, so. So, uh,
So I guess it's not a blanket, no dog at large, but are we willing to give instruction to them? Hey, in these situations until, and again, at next time, I, I don't know how we word this. But I think there's a difference between, oh, generally, yeah, we, cause right, unfortunately, people have heard from government all the time, we hear you, we hear you. And then they turn around and don't do anything about it. Um, there's a difference when we say, we hear you and we, for this specific situation, here's our commitment that for the next month, we're going to be working on this and we're going to instruct them to educate. I don't know how we work that in there, but I think there needs to be more than just, we hear you, we hear you, trust us. What we're hearing from people right now is there's maybe not a lot of trust for us in some cases and for Noco Humane and others. And whether that's legitimate or, again, I, I don't have dogs, right? So I don't have to engage on that level, but we've heard a lot of complaints from people and I think this stems to a lot of it.
I would support that. I would also like to set a deadline for our meeting to address our ordinance within two to three weeks. That I think is a huge thing because this goes into effect in 30 days after we vote for it, correct?
An ordinance is 30 days after publication. This is a resolution to appoint, uh, to approve the contract. It would go into a for, uh, go into effect April 1st. There's no 30 day waiting period.
Got it, and I would like to really see this ordinance come back immediately to us. Um, as stated, there is a lot of things in here that, I mean, residents now have a four dog maximum that'll be enforced. That's it. So you, hopefully you don't have more than three dogs or combined. Um, that's, you know, it's kind of one of those things that I'd like to agree with a set date on this ordinance coming back to us as well. I think that is important for our residents. We define what we're enforcing because then we're leaving you guys up to arguing with residents. If they have this, it's not accurate right now. So that's my concern.
Yeah, I think, um, what's your workload right now, Dan? On, on like what ordinance are you focusing on or like, cause you're working on doing some rewrites?
I think there needs to be a work session before there's an ordinance.
Okay.
I mean, I, from, from this board, what I'm hearing is a lot of different things maybe.
So we need to bring this.
Direction to get it right in ordinance, so we need a work session first.
And before that, maybe we need just engagement. So I, I, I maybe would say if we're going to set a deadline that we could maybe schedule for, um, opportunities for resident engagement to get that feedback that then would.
So this will take it, this will take it into, you know, potentially May.
Yeah, either way, I wouldn't be in favor of changing an ordinance without getting significant or doing significant effort into getting resident engagement. So I would say start there. I mean, but we got to hear from, because the ordinance is, there's way more than that, way more ordinances impacting people than the contract is. So like we, we need to hear from the public as to how and what they think ordinance is associated with pets should be.
So I think that we work something into work session, then we go from there. And then we can have this discussion further, but I think,
Yeah.
I think that's where we go with it.
I think that's a good idea.
Um, okay, and then just to circle back. Mayor Proten, are you present?
I am sorry, my apologies, I couldn't get my screen unmuted.
Okay. Do you have any further questions?
I do not have any further questions, thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, that being said, um, do I hear, yes?
Nice, a couple questions.
Yes, clarifying questions.
Sure, so you want to have a work session. Um, our next work session would be next week when we have the strategic planning, uh, meeting. And then the next meeting is March 28th, I believe, hold on, 26th. Um, we can try to hold a work session before or after that meeting if you would like. I'm not sure what the agenda looks like yet.
I think, I mean.
Start moving that forward or, I mean, you're going to buck, you're going to back up into your discussions and then potentially having a new board. So I'm trying to figure out what the best use of your time is, um, in order to have your work session and have your discussions. And then, um, thinking about what resident engagement looks like, I'll have to figure out how that looks because since we no longer have Mahala, we don't have a facilitator anymore. So we're, we'll need to come up with something, someone to, to help guide those discussions with the community and be able to do it from a, an outsider's perspective.
Thank you.
Trustee Gator? Make the suggestion that maybe we either do before or after, do a short work session and really focus that on defining what the public engagement piece looks like and direct staff to do that public engagement through, I mean, we're already at the end of March at that point, but throughout the month of April. And then that way, the new board will be coming in, they'll already have the public engagement. So basically we set out, hey, here's what we think the public engagement piece should look like so that the new board has that and then the new board can tackle that maybe at the, at May, May timeframe. So it gives us a month to whether it's surveys, whether it's meetings, whatever that looks like. But we maybe do a short work session to work out, what do we want the community feedback piece to look like?
Thanks, good.
And then we let the new board make their determination of, okay, now that we have this, how do we work out the details?
All on the board in the favor?
Makes sense.
You want that before the March 26th meeting?
Yeah, in 30 minutes? Yeah. That work, board approved, yeah, good direction.
Ethan, do we have any advisory board interviews that night? Excellent, thank you.
Is there, um, support behind the stipulations that I mentioned for our next actions? One, that was mentioned in the?
For pursuing the alternate partners, options, operation, cost, uh, agreements with LC SO, Wellington Fire Protection District, um, proactive feedback or complaints, education, and then make sure that they know to ask a neighbor.
Yep.
Um, yeah, I mean, I think it's, I think it's important that we pursue an RFP next year, get local engagement, things like that, move forward with that, see what we, what we can go there.
Provide clear direction so that we all.
So on my end, while I don't support the agreement and I won't vote for it, I do agree, if we are going to do it, I think that those are minimum stipulations that we can have.
Yeah. Okay. Um, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 08-2024, approving a joint agreement for animal control services with Noco Humane.
I'll second.
Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call please?
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Proten McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee Daley?
Yes.
Trustee Gator?
No.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
With a vote of six in favor and one against, the motion carries and resolution number eight, 2024 is approved.
Thank you. Uh, at this time, we will take a five-minute recess or whatever you want to call it, this is in the courtroom.
For quite some time. So the ordinance before you would grant Comcast a cable franchise agreement, which would be an additional provider for Wellington residents. Comcast intends to begin deployment, its cable system, which includes broadband internet services in the south part of town along Highway one and north and move north and expects to provide service to around 1,600 addresses before the end of 2024. This is really exciting for Wellington. It's something we've been working on with Comcast for at least a year, if not more. Mr. Zach Rothmeyer, representing Comcast, is here to present more information regarding the agreement. Thank you for being patient with us.
My pleasure, thanks, Ms. Garcia. Again, Zach Rothmeyer, representing council, giving me mayor, members of council. Uh, I used to do this a lot, uh, in a former life and this would be just getting the party started. So, uh, don't apologize for being late this evening, so. Um, this does represent a 10-year agreement between Comcast and, and the city, but, um, you know, we like to continue that. We like to be in the community, we like to stay in the community. We look forward to, uh, being there in the future as well. So now we don't look at this as a 10-year agreement, but just entering in a partnership with the, the community. So we're already members, um, we have good partnerships with the Boys and Girls Club up here, a lot of the education foundations. Uh, we intend to help with the Main Street redevelopment, um, that you guys have been forward with the federal grant. Um, as, uh, for us being in your right-of-way, uh, you also get a 5% franchise fee, so that's on our gross revenues, um, in the area. So that's a way that we can work with you as a city and we work with your permitting office. Um, and it's, you know, we tear up your roads, we put them back together, but we also know that that's a headache to your citizens. And so, um, hopefully you can use that franchise money to, to do good things. Um, we've also given a $40,000 grant, uh, for AV equipment, uh, for your meetings, specifically for City Hall. You can kind of go through those expenses, um, but it's kind of up to you what you want to, to use those for. Um, this will be recruited through pay fees, uh, but more than anything, we're just happy to be in the community. We're happy to serve underserved communities. Uh, we do have Internet Essentials Program, uh, which is a $10 internet, uh, 30 if you need. So you have a large family, you need, you know, a little higher speed. Uh, it used to be subsidized by the federal government, uh, which would make that zero. Unfortunately, um, the federal government has put that on hold at the moment, but we still offer that, um, program. And, and we have before it was even subsidized by the federal government. So that's not going away, uh, just because the federal, um, took it away, but you know, that, that's not the case everywhere. So we're here, we're here to help all citizens. Um, and I have to answer any questions? Um, and I did provide a letter to the, the town that assures that we will, uh, serve those two water, the water treatment facility as well as the, uh, water reclamation facility.
Awesome, thank you. Mayor Proten?
No questions at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Wiegand?
No questions, but I'm excited to see what you guys can do here.
Thanks, sir.
Trustee Teets?
No questions.
Trustee Gator?
I think the only question I had had is, so typically when you guys are working the right-of-way, is that going under roads? Is it going to the side of roads? Is it a bit of both? How does that typically?
I mean, we prefer not to tear up the roads. Uh, if there's easement on the side, right-of-way on the side, we'll, we'll do that first.
Okay.
We'll do what's, what's the least impactful. I mean, that, that helps our business case as well, right? If we can get in and get out and get the, the permits returned, that helps us. And so, you know, ideally as less boring as possible, um, you know, as much as we can trench and put aerial, um, on the existing poles. We're not going to put up new poles, but, um, and the faster we can get to your community.
Okay, got it. And then do you have a rough timeframe as to, because obviously our plants are not close.
Yeah.
Do you have a rough timeframe as far as when you guys would be looking to be able to provide service?
Most likely not 2024.
Okay.
Um, you just be candid. On the, the northern plant, I believe that's, uh, is that the treatment?
That's the water treatment?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, you know, when, when we do our business cases, we do worst case scenario. And so we've costed that out as boring.
Okay.
And so that's why I haven't given you a number on a cost share yet because that's supposed to a million dollars. And we, that's not acceptable to us, it's not acceptable to you guys, we know that.
Yeah.
You know, we're looking to, to trench and aerial as much as possible there, which will bring that cost significantly down.
Okay.
Uh, but once this franchise is passed and we go to, you know, final design, then we can have better costing. And so, and better, um, you know, maps as far as what, you know, our outlier is. And then we've also committed to meeting with the town, um, Patty and her team as far as, uh, the regular cadence of what those outliers look like.
Awesome, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Trustee Daley?
Um, I'm excited of the idea of offering more competition for services that are very much needed in our community. And, uh, the grant that's included in that, I think, um, is, is a great improvement. We've heard some concerns about video or audio for meetings and just making sure it's really consistent. And we are innovating and keeping up with technology. This is a great opportunity to do that, um, with this. So, uh, I appreciate those are in it. And then of course, thank you for doing the letter for the water and wastewater treatment. Um, that was important to me as well, so all those have been acknowledged at this point.
Absolutely, and if I may, on that grant, um, just as a little background, you know, we used to come into communities and we would do a, you know, access channel. And we realized, you know, this is 2024 and not everyone watches cable. So this is a way for you to get, you know, to whoever their provider is, you know, get your meetings out to them and have that ability to, whether it's the web or, you know, whatever device. And so we found that that's a lot more effective and a lot more useful to, to communities versus, you know, setting up a little television station back, back behind you.
Yeah.
Trustee Mason?
No questions, super excited to have you guys come to town, so.
Or I have no questions. Um, public comment?
I'm sorry, sir, what was your name? Zach, can I just ask for my public comment? Can you come back and speak into the microphone so I could hear? I didn't understand what you, what Comcast is bringing in, but it was really hard to just hear. And I have tall people in my family and I run into this a lot, but if you can just please speak into the microphone because it's really hard to understand anything you said, I'm so sorry.
No, that's fine.
Thank you.
And, yeah, if it helps, I'll, I'll face this direction as well. No, it's, uh, so we're, we're going to bring in our, our cable product, but along with that comes our broadband product. So this is the cable franchise. As a cable company, we're regulated under a different authority than, you know, your, your com, your Century Links or your Verizons, uh, that would be considered a telecom. So this franchise is specifically for cable, but along with that, we bring in our broadband, which, you know, will be fiber to the premises everywhere up here. We, you know, technologies change, we're putting fiber in. And so that will be internet, fast internet, um, everywhere, uh, that we go. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. No more further public comment? Um, further questions or direction from the board? Trustee Gator?
Um, I just was curious, so the amount of the grant, that's 40,000? And is that a time-bound grant? Does it come in at like a specific time or when does that, how does that work?
I think it was, is it 120 days or 240?
Got it, okay.
And we are already in contact with Excite Audio Video, who, who currently services our AV, so they know what we have, they know what our gaps are and what we need. So they'll be putting in some, some bids for us and we'll let y'all know what we end up
Okay.
Going with.
Thank you.
You bet.
I am excited to welcome Comcast, thank you very much.
Mayor Proten? Mayor Proten?
No further comments, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, excited to have Comcast, so thank you for that. Um, do I hear a motion on this item?
I move to approve ordinance number 5-2024 and ordinance of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Wellington, Colorado, awarding Comcast of Colorado Nine LLC, a 10-year non-exclusive revocable franchise to construct, operate, maintain, construct and build a cable system within the Town of Wellington.
I second.
Mr. Clerk, may I get a roll call please?
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Daley?
Yes.
Mayor Proten McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries unanimously and the ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Reports, Mr. Dan Sepienza?
No reports at this time.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia?
So as I mentioned earlier, um, next Tuesday is the Town Hall Strategic Plan. Um, so inviting community members and so invite your friends, your family, all the people you know for Wellington, so we can start getting some feedback, um, some foundational information so that when the Board of Trustees goes into strategic planning, they have an idea of what those community wants are. Um, I did mention Mahala a little bit ago, we did talk to Mahala and she will be coming to facilitate this effort. Um, she did a great job last year, she was willing to, to take on a couple, to, to take this on for us. And we felt like she knows the community well, she understands the culture of the community and, and will do a fantastic job for us. So we'll see Mahala next Tuesday. Um, as we all know, we're hearing reports of a snowstorm coming in Wednesday night. Um, you know, we never know what it's going to be, but we are monitoring that. And if need be, you know, if the snow comes in, like they say, plow crews will be out. Um, we do monitor that and we do put on our website where the plow website where the plows are going and things like that. Depending on the level of snow, of course, my first concern is always the safety of our employees. So if we need to do like a late start on Thursday or something like that, but I will let the trustees know how we, how we proceed. If we end up doing a late start at Town Hall, we'll do the same thing for the library. Or if we close Town Hall, if for some reason roads are impassable, then if we close Town Hall, then we would close the library as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
That's what I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yes. Mr. Moose has a comment.
Just very quickly. So as an update to the board on the election, ballots, domestic ballots for the regular election in April of this year went out on Monday. Members of the public who would like to vote can return those by mail. There's also a Dropbox next to the town's municipal services building on Third Street. And then the Laramie County Dropbox will be available to the town for our election beginning this Friday. So if you would like to deposit your ballot as a member of the Wellington community in that Dropbox just outside of this building, it will be available beginning Friday morning. So thank you.
Thank you. Staff communications are in the packet. Were there any questions from the board on these? No? Okay. Board reports. Start with Trustee Mason.
No report.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim?
No report.
Trustee Wigan?
No report.
Trustee Teets?
I have two things. My first will be, I know I had a community member reach out to me. And actually, I've had multiple community members reach out to me regarding business licensing and renewals here in town. I understand that Mr. Muse has a very busy schedule, but with, gosh, I asked, I want to say it was a month ago, and we had seventy-nine business licenses waiting to be approved or renewed at that time. Since then, I've had members reach out to me that just went to submit business licenses and they were told that there's no, there, it's not set up yet. I know that we have a computer system that is going to be coming online, but I feel right now as our board, we need to, as part of our strategic plan and supporting small business or business in general, give direction to accept paper applications so we can process those renewals and new licenses while we're waiting for this system to come online.
Can I ask why?
For business licenses to get approved?
Yeah.
Because people can't operate their business if they don't have licensing approved.
So they can, because we've waived the fees for the time being until that process is up. So, I mean, technically, they can still operate and the major licensing through the state would really be what's needed. And as long as they're compliant with the state and they report their earnings, the town should get its tax money, whether we have a business license through the town or not.
Well, if they report that for licensing, for sales tax, everything like that. But if we don't have a way of identifying that, we are not collecting sales tax dollars. So we're losing money not collecting sales tax dollars.
The sales taxes collected by the state, the town being a home rule municipality, all sales tax except actually the special marijuana tax. It's a state-administered sales tax. So it's all collected by the state. So the sales tax license, they need to go to the state to get a sales tax license and those sales taxes are paid to the state. So our business licensing process has, doesn't enter into collection of sales tax.
But if they're not registering, then we get nothing, correct?
There's a state requirement that they, they still need to register with the state to get the state's sales tax license and they pay the state the sales tax. So not getting a local business license wouldn't impact their payment of a sales tax.
But it would impact their some functionality to work here. So say like a daycare provider, where one of their requirements would be to submit that they are licensed in Wellington to do daycare.
We don't license, the daycares are, daycare is licensed by the state.
So they don't have to have a business license here in town?
A daycare license is issued by the state. They would still need to get a business license, but that wouldn't enter into the license, the daycare license issued by the state. We are not enforcing the business license provision at the moment. The enforcement of that to say that a business couldn't operate would have to go through court. And we've got a whole process for it. While we set this up, we're not sending people summons or tickets for violation of the ordinance. So but it, I want to say, it doesn't enter into sales tax at all. And state-issued licenses don't go through the town.
Okay. So we're giving them the heads up to go ahead and operate when they call, when they come in or call in even?
Yes, I've been told that personally, because I went to re-register my sales tax and I was told I would not be fined for operating. I could still operate as usual as soon as it is up. Then I get my business license through the town, but that doesn't affect sales tax or anything, because I pay the state.
Got it. So that's just a public notice that you can go ahead, open up and operate? Because we're not processing them right now.
I would say operate as, as usual, you know, and then once it's up, submit. That's what I'm just waiting for it to be up to.
Got it. That's it?
Perfect. Perfect. Trustee Gator?
Yeah. So I had two things that I wanted to go through. The first is kind of a request. So it sounds like this conversation with animal control and all that, it was happening last year. I know it was included in budget, but it was just very high level. Here's a number. There was no details around it. There was no back and forth. We have talked about this in the past about really trying to give the board and community time to engage on issues. This was kind of brought to the board with, hey, we have no contract in place and they're operating under this contract, assuming it's approved. But that was the first I had seen of this, other than just a number during budget. I saw a number nineteen thousand dollars during budget. That was it. That's all I had until this was brought back to us in March. It's really problematic, because when we get to, Trustee Mason brought up a great point, my hands are tied. We, I need to make a decision because we have nothing. This has not been the first time that we get brought things. It's like, well, we, and I get it sometimes, we don't know, but it sounds like we've known this for eight months, a year that this was coming. But then it was brought to us kind of at the last minute instead of having time for these conversations. So my ask would be, let's not be in these situations where it's like, board, you have to do this because you have another option. To me, that's not a good way of governing. That's not good governance. The second thing is I'd really like to get a straight answer on the audit, because I was told by Don Rhodes, everything's in, numbers are there. We're literally just waiting on their letter that says everything's good. Then we got an email saying, well, we're still trying to tie numbers back. There's a big difference between we're waiting for the letter that says it's all good and we're still trying to tie, tying numbers back means that a number here and a number here don't match. So where are we actually at? Because I keep getting different information and we've been on this ride for a year now. Audit's almost done. Audit's almost done. Audit will be presented. We're literally waiting for a letter and then it's, well, actually, we're waiting for numbers to be tied back. Those are two very different things.
I know this has been frustrating and I'm as frustrated as you are. Mr. Rhodes, so the financials were presented to him. And that's when he said, he's got everything. He's just waiting on the letter. He started to do some checking to make sure the numbers were tying out. So you know, if there was a two thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars listed in, I don't know, in one account, did it align with what is supposed to be in the public works account line item? And some of those line items were not, they were not aligning. He, they, they were not, they were not correct. So he was sending back corrections or requests for corrections to the audit firm, saying, this doesn't tie out. Can you check on this? This doesn't tie out. Check into this. So he's been doing that for a couple of weeks now. We had hoped to have everything ready, like we were hoping for Monday. I got an email from him at six forty-five tonight saying he's, he's now good with final draft of the financial, financials and notes. He'll finalize the M D N A and we'll have a complete final draft. Once he gets that together, he's going to send me a cover, a cover email pointing out the highlights and key takeaways that will be forwarded to the board and the finance committee. And that's, that's what I know. We, this has been a tough experience with this audit firm. It's been unfortunate. But they are almost done. Hinkle and Company has opened up their portal. We're submitting information to them now for the twenty twenty-two audit, a much larger firm. So we'll have plenty of support and help. They aren't relying on just one, one partner and an admin person to get that audit done.
Thank you. Trustee Daly?
Two updates. Commissioner Kafalas has a meeting monthly. Most of us in here may have attended before, but anybody listening online, it's the first Thursday of the month at seven thirty at the T-Bar. That's generally where it is in, in the schedule. But follow Laramie County government if you want all the final details and schedules, just as a shout out there. This last meeting, we talked about solid waste. We haven't had that come in front of us in a long time. We've been waiting for and considering whether or not all the, all the parties and municipalities included in the MOU memorandum of understanding will be accepting and abeyance of the, the current agreement. More communities have at this point. Not all, although I don't know the meeting schedule for, for Collins. But so that is moving along. And the reason why I'm updating you, saying that there's an abeyance, is that once the abeyance is accepted through all the parties, which we did, we were the first ones, we're done with that. Then we can start renegotiating what the understanding and agreement need to look like going forward to make sure that we're participating in the solid waste strategic plan and the policy associated with that through the Policy Council. So that was a long update to say, nothing's happened yet from the Policy Council. But it was a really informative conversation with Kafalas to see where they're at just operationally and planning for that. And then for them to do a little bit more public engagement associated with what their plans are, what their restrictions are. A lot of haulers were present at the meeting. It was a great turnout, actually. Several private haulers were there, small businesses to much bigger businesses. So I like that they have a voice and they are showing up and participating. It was also a great opportunity to, to meet kind of all the parties who are servicing our, our community. So that was a great opportunity. But just so you guys know that those conversations are occurring and that was the topic that was brought to Wellington Waverly, Wellington Waverly conversations, community conversations this last month. So that's a solid waste Policy Council and staff update. The other thing is PROS, Parks, Rec, Open Space and Trails. I'm the liaison to that group. They are amazing. But there was a major concern that was brought up during the last meeting. The question was asked as I invited them to our strategic planning session that's coming up that Ms. Garcia just mentioned. And I wanted to make sure that they showed up to represent, not just from a PROS perspective, but from a resident perspective of what they're looking for in the community. They're all very engaged and involved. They'd be great members to participate, as is everyone. So everybody should come. And they, they did share kind of an overall encompassing concern that I just wanted to speak on the rahah. And the concern was, and the question was, it was a celebration that we included some parks items, including master planning on our strategic plan for the last two years. But given that's a project that is budgeted into the future beyond the strategic plan. So the concern was a consistency and support behind PROS initiatives of whether or not they will have to hope that they have the support every two years as new boards are brought on for kind of promises or commitments to strategically plan for their items. So if they, and, and this is the reason why, they say we have to do a Parks master plan, because everything that they plan and do doesn't make sense until we have a master plan associated with parks. So it's holding them up, is what they're saying. They can't get work done. They are volunteers. They're committed. They have a large plan. They do so much for giving feedback, of course, through the PROS meetings and accepting community comments and just representing the community. But they say that they are paralyzed until the Parks master plan occurs. And I know we have it budgeted. We have it scheduled. It's a CIP project. But the reason why I'm bringing this up in extra attention is as we continue to adopt new strategic plans, they're worried they're going to fall off. And then suddenly, that's not going to be a priority anymore. And meanwhile, every, all the work that they're doing is held up. So I wanted to bring that message. It was loud and clear that they, they want and need consistent support from the board. Not saying that they don't have it right now, but I just wanted to reiterate that that was a concern that they have for the upcoming year. So that's the message to pass along from PROS. Thank you.
Yeah, Steve, right? Perfect. Patty and Trustee Daly and I attended the Incident Command Center training with Laramie County, and that was really good. Good information, a lot of stuff to be had there. We have a lot of things that we can look forward to in the future to address, to make sure that we're prepared. A lot looks like, I mean, a lot of the stuff, other municipalities have done, they, a lot of it came out of disaster, a lot of it came out of Katrina, things of that nature that have helped Laramie County as a whole learn best ways to move forward. They kind of, I mean, they used a wedding as, or planning a wedding as the assembly or whatever you want to call it, for how you, you plan out for disasters and things of that nature. So it was really cool for them to, to have that with us and look forward to doing more things like that in the future to start moving things forward that way. I had one other thing. Oh, chipped animals. If you have an animal and you have special needs or, or anything of that nature, or maybe you're somebody that travels a lot, you can put multiple names on the tag, on the chip, things of that nature, so they have multiple points of contact. So if Noco Humane picks up that animal, they can scan that and kind of go down the list and hopefully find somebody that can house your dog for you here locally as a potential option for you. So that's something that was brought to my attention during our brief break. So just wanted to make that publicly known. Maybe not a lot of people thought about that or doing that for their animals. Other than that, that's all that I've got. Hearing no further business. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now close the regular meeting. Time being nine twenty-six PM.